We can hear you.
Yes.
You ready? Okay, should we start one minute early? All right, welcome everybody. We are going to call our special city council meeting to order at 5:30 PM. Let's go ahead and start with roll calls.
Councilor Gerhardt?
Here.
Councilor Braverman?
Yes.
Councilor Tyto?
Here.
Councilor Olson?
Here.
Councilor Diddy?
Can't hear you. Are you calling my name? Speaker?
Yes. Councilor Diddy?
Here.
Here. Okay, um, next is Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able and would like to stand, please put your hand out.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, next item on our agenda is to consider an approved minutes. We have three. Um, we will do them separately. The first one is July 24th, regular city council meeting. Um, I did note just a couple spelling. Under present staff, Driscoll, Sergeant, and Courtney. We're all about missing a letter, I think. That's all I saw. Does anybody else have corrections for July 24th?
Still looking at it. I think there may be some.
Oh, this typo? Yeah.
That's what I noted.
Yeah. I can see three typos, I think. Was it Driscoll, Sergeant, and Courtney? Any others?
I think that's good enough.
Okay. Somebody like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 24th.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All in? I forget. Can we do a roll? Do we have to roll call for this or can I just do? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
Some of us standing up was in it, uh, along the city council. Did you ever watch the video? Oh, no, okay.
All right, motion passes. I zero one. Next up, we have our July 29th, regular city council. And I think the same thing, Driscoll, this and the O. And then I think under unfinished business, are those your shorthand comments right above? So if you want to not have those or... I mean, it says what's in the longhand, but... That was under the unfinished business. I think there was only one item. This looks like you had like JB. Yeah. Anybody else have any other edits and thoughts? You get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve with the, excuse me, with the corrections have pointed out.
Would you mind repeating that with the date of the minutes that we're going to approve?
Oh, sure, and, um...
Uh, July 29th.
Yes, motion to approve the July 29th minutes with the corrections as pointed out.
I'll second that.
Motion on the floor is to approve the July 29th regular city minutes with edits. All in favor, raise your hand. There we go. All opposed, and abstained, one abstention. Okay, motion passes. Next one, our August 7th city council work and special session minutes. And I didn't have any notes on that one. Anybody else?
I did. Um, it says that you noted that LGPS had withdrawn from consideration. That's not really happening. Uh, we got notified from, I mean, the day of the extension. It was very suspicious and I think that should be noted. We didn't get any notice of seeing it withdrawn. And that's on section five.
Okay, let the record show that we were given an email at, what was it, running 12:15?
Yeah.
I think that would be a good way of putting it in there.
Think of the edits?
Are you, I'm sorry, under the unfinished business of that, of the special section, we also have shorthand motions made by JB asking that she seconded. Should we put the names in there or you want to read them? 13. Section 13. Special session, is it written?
Oh, yeah, it was on that one too. Good catch.
August 7th. At the very bottom of section 13, there's a bunch of initials.
Oh, Jessica Braverman and Stacey.
I just know people that think we have a secret.
The shorthand.
Secret society.
Unfinished business, section 13.
Under section 13.
All right, you get a motion to approve, August 7th.
Make a motion to approve the August 7th special meeting minutes with edits.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion, um, seconded. Motion on the floor is to approve August 7th, um, city council work and special session with edits. All in favor, raise your hand. Ben Sue, all opposed, and abstained, one abstention. Okay, motion passes. Um, next step, special presentation, that we do not have any currently. We'll move in a later session later for one. Um, so next item would be open forum. So open forum is intended to ensure community has an opportunity to provide input for items being considered on the agenda or make suggestions for future agendas. At this time, the city council will be happy to receive your comments pertaining to agenda items with the exception of public hearings, which we do not have any tonight. Your time will be limited to three minutes. Did we get a sign up sheet? No, nobody signed up today? Okay, would anybody like to make public comment before we close it?
Anybody online?
Anybody online, if you would like to make public comment, go ahead and raise your hand. Hearing none, we will go ahead and close open forum. Next up, unfinished business. We have none tonight, so moving on to item number eight, new business. Um, the first item is to discuss and consider the union agreement. I will be recusing myself of this discussion because I have a conflict of interest. My husband is part of the union.
So, um, I think what we want to do is I first want to invite the chief and Adam Collier to give us an update on what is going on with the union agreement and present it to us if that's a good time to do so.
Okay, so we reached an overall consensus agreement with the union. They have already gone ahead and voted and voted to ratify the contract, so we're presenting it to the city council to be ratified. Do you want to...
For transparency, since the public did not get to participate in our executive session when we went over the terms, I do think it's imperative that we outline the terms and make sure it's transparent and then, I believe the council needs to approve it, is that correct?
Yes, the council does need to approve it. So, uh, just as a reminder, this contract actually expires February 24th, so it's long.
Adam, you might come up to the stand for the audio.
Uh, so it's a three-year contract that it will, the prior contract expired June 30, 2024, so we're making up the lost time here. This contract will expire June 30, 2027. Uh, what the parties have agreed to is an overall 15% base pay increase that captures all three years. Um, we've also, for employees who are topped out on steps, who are already at the top step of the pay range instead of, uh, they, um, if they're topped out next year on July 1, 2026, they'll get a 4% increase. Other employees will get whatever step increase they're eligible for. Other highlights, we changed the retirement benefits. Previously, the employees were getting, all of the employees were getting the same contribution amount, even though the, the place are in pears. And so their, their amount is dictated by, by hers, the amount that the city pays. The other employees were getting the same amount. We, that's been capped now, I believe it's capped at 21% going forward. And... Any other highlights, chief, that you think we should cover?
Just, uh, we have the ratification bonus, uh, back to January. That was, uh, you know, it's, uh, ratification bonus of the baseline, uh, back to January. As, uh, for the ratification, we did some minor changes with, um, I call it the boot allowance, but it's clothing allowance for all employees, went from $200 up to $300. Also, um, as far as premium pay or incentive pay, now the college degrees are included in it. It previously wasn't. And, uh, certificate pay for a police officer where it runs through basic, intermediate, advanced supervisor, executive, I missed one.
Management.
Management, and, but it's capped at 10% of that. And, uh, longevity pay is also included in there at, there's benchmarks, 5, 10, 15, and 20 years, and that's a certain percentage. There's two, four, six, and eight for those benchmarks, uh, you know, their base pay, um, just to try to entice people to stay here in King City water.
Not the one-time.
Yeah, it's a one-time payment and stuff to them. Only ban, yeah, that's about all I have. And just the minor language change from bonus paid premium and, uh, incentives or the certificate.
So I understand that all have run through, he has assured everyone this is not going to bank off to King City. She's done the numbers, is that I understand, and I'll, I'll just need to speak to that real quickly?
Yeah, we did work with Katie on our offer. Katie ran the numbers for the city, reviewed the city's financial situation, ensured that the, the city can't afford what we're offering to pay to the union, uh, what to, to the employees. And, um, we, we think it's a fair offer. They were, um, quite frankly, in this market because you're in the middle of a bunch of large, much larger cities. Many of these employees are paid less than their counterparts in other cities, and so this is a bit of a catch-up for them, but they're not going to be as high level as, uh, city employees.
So do we risk losing some good employees?
I think there's always a risk. I mean, I, you're, you're always going to have employees who, who may decide that, hey, I can make more money going somewhere else.
I want to get everybody to finish talking, and I'm going to open it up for questions. So is there anything?
Oh, I thought you had a question already.
Well, I just wanted him, he, he left out the part that they talked to the, the financials. Just making sure we cover our bases for the record. But I'm going to open it up for questions if you guys are on. Oh, Katie, are you here? Oh, I didn't even know. Okay, Katie, can you tell us from your perspective what went into all of this?
Yes, and I was joining as a panelist right as we were switching to, um, to questions about that, so I don't know if I missed anything. But I did note that Adam and the chief covered all the notes that I have on what the changes were and that I am comfortable from a budgetary standpoint that the city can well absorb these adjustments. And, so, yeah, we've tirelessly looked at all the numbers and I'm comfortable. It's nearly, uh, it's a negligible change to this fiscal year and a minor increase, a 4% increase next fiscal year. Did you have other specific questions?
Well, I'm going to open it, I'm just, I'm trying to just facilitate. I'm going to open it up to all the city councilors if they have questions. This is the time that I wanted to make sure that we had given a full and complete, robust explanation and presentation before I open it up for questions. So I don't, I'm just wondering, I'm just asking, is there anything more or anyone else want to say anymore about it? Okay, so I'd like to open it up and if, Adam, if you don't mind, if you have any questions, and Katie, you might get two questions.
Uh, you mentioned back pay. Um, I guess another word for that is retroactive pay.
Yes.
And, and the contract ended last June of 2024, didn't it?
Yes.
So are we going back to?
Yeah, that's why we increased the percentage to 15%, and it's actually a little bit more than what they would have gotten paid.
Okay, I think you explained that.
Yeah, and so it is, it's a better deal, so to speak.
And really 5% per year?
Close to it. Yeah, close to 3% off. Yeah, if, if we combine everything, and Katie can explain better, is that we actually save money by doing the 15% across-the-board increase. It's 0.3%, I think is what, uh, approximately is what we save.
If, if we would have signed this agreement and it would have been effective July 2024, and there was a 5% increase per year versus what we're doing as kind of this, uh, part, increasing everyone as of September 1st, I believe is the date, and then doing kind of this ratification bonus, the city is ultimately paying less in salaries by doing a 15% now versus 10, maybe 10, 10% catch-up and then another 5% because of the way compounding interest works.
I, I guess my biggest concern is we're going to potentially lose good people. This is a great community and, and, and we love you guys and support the heck out of you. We don't want to lose anybody.
And, and that's part of the reason for, you know, us increase, you know, the incentive pay, uh, looking, you know, bilingual, the, the degrees which we previously didn't have and trying to retain people at the best that we can, because I'll be honest, they are openly recruiting people away from here. They do.
I bet.
They, they come over and people try to talk officers into leaving, especially when you get some talented officers that are out there doing the work because we're single-person units out here that are on a shift and everything like that. They know how to work here. And so it is easy to, they're already trained and they can step across the street or go down the street or wherever it is, and, you know, they, they make more money. And this is a start to trying to get us closer to their compensation packages with the other cities. Now, look, we'd love to have all done it all at once to try to get them caught up, but that's not going to happen. But after this one expires, then we can try to catch up a little bit more and just kind of do it incrementally. And we've done that steadily even for Brian Stein, and I've been here for 18 years. And they've done that, you know, it started with, uh, this isn't, this has precedent. They did a 14% increase, um, mid-contract one time. And, um, David Wells was here, and so it's happened before, and it's things that, you know, we're trying to retain our talent level and, you know, keep the good people here that want to be here and work for the small community because we have phenomenal employees. And so, yes, there's always that chance, but we, we think we're starting to close the gap.
So let us know in the city council if there's anything any of us can do at any time, because I, I can't believe I'm saying this. I'm not a union guy. And I, I support the heck out of you guys.
Okay, that's good. Jan, do you have any questions? Um, because we're going to, uh, we're going to, we have to vote on this and move it along. So Jan, do you have any specific questions or comments?
I do not at this point in time. I have read over, because Ronnie had emailed us this contract, and it seems, it seems fair. And we have, I think, all the way around have expressed needs and the ability to fulfill the needs as best we can. And because we are a small organization, we cannot compete with a large organization, but there are other benefits for being in a small organization. So, you know, it's not just the dollars and cents. It's other reasons to be here.
Councilor Diddy, do you have any questions, uh, thoughts?
That's fair. I looked at it this afternoon. Yeah, some people are going to move because they will make more money. Uh, the city can't afford to pay at a certain rate, and that's the way it is. So this contract is right, and hopefully all the officers will stay.
Uh, Councilor Olson, do you want to join in?
Katie, I have a couple quick questions. Um, I just don't understand what's going on. Why do the negotiations take so long to complete?
I, I can't answer that question. I've been involved about a month.
Yeah, there, there was a, a little bit of a breakdown when the...
Prior to the...
Prior to the contract expiring and stuff, and so there was a delay in information, and then just things kind of unraveled from there. And it just was a lot of miscommunications, and there was, quite frankly, some, I'm going to call it, I'm just going to call it bad offers. And from us, and that's what we stepped up to take care of. And so it was, you know, there, there was a proposal before where we were going to make officers pay, everybody pay their 6% in pears. And so we're still covering the 6%. And so we were actually going to be taking money away. And so it was something that, you know, we just felt we wanted to do what's fair to keep everybody here, and that's a lot of it right there. And I, quite honestly, the, uh, the bargaining group that the officers are with, it's a big group and it's a really busy group. And so to, to get people, uh, you know, nailed down specific times can be somewhat difficult and stuff. So it, it just kind of a perfect storm, and, you know, now we've hopefully got it taken care of and into the future. It'll be even better just because I'm a former, you know, president of associations in two different locations, our admin as well. And so, you know, we're very cognizant of our employees and we want to take care of them the best that we can. And so we're always pro-employee and we, we do what we can within the budget constraints that we have.
Okay, thanks, chief. And one last question was, uh, are union members, are they satisfied as good and as fair?
Yes, my understanding is that they overwhelmingly voted in favor of this contract.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, I have a couple of things I want to say. First of all, I really want to thank Adam Collier. He came in the last minute, he got your hire, he got on board, he helped us. Really want to thank Chief Happola, who, um, you know, has been in the ministry in the last couple of meetings, he put them on the spot. We've made an interim city manager. We obviously could help, our task, the expense of arbitration process, the expense of mediation process, the expense of lawyer process. The chief, the tenant, all stepped up. Um, everybody pitched in. You took the laboring or thank you. We had immediate meetings. Educated us. Katie got involved. She spent a lot of time helping us untangle all this financially. I need to really recognize and thank all of you so much because we do support our people here, as Councilor Gerhardt was saying. I hope that you have seen by our actions how quickly, um, when Dan, the union rep came, I asked him, who do you re, we do recommend as an attorney. We want to get on this immediately. Uh, we got Adam involved immediately, and we moved it as fast as we could. I want to say I am so humbly sorry that I took this long. Um, it's an embarrassment, and it will not continue. We're hoping that Adam will stay with us for whatever rounds come up in the future. So I just want to say a huge thank you and thank you. So are, would it be the next step then for us to make a motion to, tell me how we should put this on the record, Adam?
Yeah, I think somebody should make a motion to ratify the collective bargaining agreement that's been, um, the union has ratified that you had before you, and, and then I think you take a vote on it.
I make a motion that we ratify the agreement between King City Police Employees Association and the City of King City.
I second it. You want roll call for me? Okay, so all in favor of ratifying the union agreement, just raise your hand. And, uh, Ben, so do you have a question or two? Okay, so, um, the motion has passed. I just want to say today is a day for all the people in King City to celebrate after waiting over a year for the contract, King City employees having a proposal that we have just passed. It's been approved by our financial, our labor attorney, Adam Collier, and our acting city manager, Chief Happola, and all the employees. So I really want to acknowledge that today, being September 4th, just days after the federal holiday of Labor Day, the timing of this accomplishment is very fitting. Uh, Labor Day originated from the late 19th century. Labor movement was sought to celebrate and recognize the contributions of workers to American society. The first Labor Day celebration was held in New York City on September 5th, 1882, with 10,000 workers marching to demonstrate the power of trade and labor organizations. I want to really say that on behalf of myself as president of the city council and all of our city councilors, we want to thank and recognize all of our great, um, city workers. But beyond that, we also want to, um, thank and recognize our vendors, our contract employees, such as our council and others who, um, help, um, make things to be wonderful. I also want to take a, a minute to thank Ronnie Smith, who always wears about a thousand hats, runs about a thousand miles a day, that also keep us in line here at King City. Um, I want to thank our volunteers. We are grateful for all of those who volunteer their time, be part of the planning commission, our budget committee, our charter committee, and all the volunteers who have assisted King City, um, and, and continue. We have people outside of King City in Rivermead who also volunteer their time and help the city be a better King City to all of us. Um, we also want to thank and recognize our external customers, our 5,000-plus residents of King City who pay their taxes and make it financially possible to pay our King City workers and vendors, independent contractors. And we want to say we value you, we thank you, and we recognize you. Um, so I just want to say, um, it has really been my privilege to help facilitate this. I think we moved it quickly as fast as we could. I want to acknowledge the input of all of the people who made this happen. And so I just want to say, and I hope everybody will join me in saying, congratulations, King City.
Okay, next item on our agenda is to interview, discuss, and appoint a city council applicant. Our only applicant tonight is Sandra Cunningham. Would you like to come answer a couple questions for us? Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Um, I'm going to...
May I ask you things?
Sure, go for it. Go ahead.
I want to thank you for this opportunity. I've been involved in the city about three years now. It all started with a letter to Mayor Vander and the city manager about traffic concerns. It is one of my big issues. I've been acting and voting and have spoken with residents during those times and listened to their concerns. I would say that in KCCA, the primary concerns are traffic, speeding, roads, and the crumbling infrastructure. I believe that elections have been about the hope for change. I was hopeful after the last city council meeting, when I witnessed the interaction between the council and the people in the open forum that were talking, what a great example of council interacting with and listening to the residents. People are coming and being heard. I'm honored to be considered, if chosen, I will do my best to represent the voters in an ethical and transparent way. Thank you. That's my little statement.
Thank you for your statement. Um, I'm going to allow each of the councilors to ask some questions, and I will go ahead and start with Councilor Gerhardt.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham, you go by Sandra or Sandy?
Sandy.
Sandy. What's your, uh, what's your favorite flavor of ice cream?
Chocolate.
Let me get that one out of the way. Let me get that one out of the way.
Aren't you serving?
And later, we'll... So, can you talk a little bit about a RIT?
Yep.
And about recalls in general?
Yes. So, we've heard from Councillor Braverman over the months that she's been serving, that the city, that we have as residents in the city, we only have two actions that we can take if we are, want to oppose what our city is doing. And that's a legal action and a recall action. So, I didn't get appointed in December, and so I started a legal action, right? It was a RIT that I filed with the court. And the judge ruled against me, which was really disappointing. But the really wonderful thing about that is, there's a really positive side to that, and Ronnie's a part of this. If you, did you look at the last city vacancy notice? It has changed considerably. It shows the name of the vacancy. It shows the publication and the notice date of the vacancy. It shows the legal timeframe for the vacancy to be open and the legal timeframe for the waiting period. And then really clear instructions on how to apply after hours. So Ronnie did a great job, and there was some change because of that RIT. Now, as far as the recalls, I want to say, there was a recall a couple of months ago. I wasn't involved with it. The chief petitioner for that recall, after he got his permission to proceed from the Secretary of State, that he had the necessary signatures for that recall within a matter of days. And that, to me, is a very strong statement from the city residents saying that they want the change that you all represent by being elected. And so that's the course of action that has been taken.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good for anybody else?
And I was one of the people that you initially started a recall petition, and I don't know if you have followed through with it because I've not received any further information. So...
Would you like me to talk about that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I did file a recall against you. And I, you know, filled out the necessary paperwork a couple of times. Ronnie had to teach me a few lessons about recalling, which was great. And then I received permission back, a go-ahead, from the Secretary of State. And I've been, and I've had it for about six weeks, and I'm just holding it. I haven't sent it out. I haven't asked for anybody to sign it. It's just sitting in a folder on my desk. I haven't acted on it.
And I saw that the reason was partly because I and every other councillor here voted in favor of the $80,000 change in the legal fees. And I was the one person that was singled out for that. And the other, it was mostly you didn't feel like I was listening to people. And I feel like I've gone out of my way to listen to people and say, I'm here. And I've met with people. It doesn't, you know... And so it bothers me that you have a very strong negative opinion of me.
So this is what...
An appearance of it, let me put it that way.
This is what I'd like to say. I'm holding that, I'm holding that recall petition, right? I'm not acting on it. And if I'm appointed here tonight, I'm hopeful that you and I can find some common ground and that we can work out some compromises and even agree to disagree when necessary, and that we can work through it in a very transparent way to serve the city, the city residents. I'm hopeful of that.
I would just interject. I actually did recuse myself of that budgetary vote. I had a... Excuse me. So I did not vote for it. But I appreciate the sentiment. Thank you for the... Councillor, Councillor President Braverman, do you have any questions?
I agree. I don't think I voted for it either, but it's okay.
Do you have questions for Ms. Cunningham?
So besides the good points about the traffic and the deterioration of infrastructure, are there other items that you, and other talents and things that you're going to... Should you be appointed to the council?
You know, I don't want to brag, but I'm an incredible problem solver. And I've done that with, you know, I used to manage, in my last job, I managed a law firm up in Washington DC, the 150 lawyers and 150 staff people. And so you have to learn to be a really good problem solver when you're dealing in those kinds of situations.
Councillor Olson.
Sandy, you've been involved in the community. We've heard your attending meetings, you've been sometimes commenting at the council meetings. I've read her application and her resume, and I don't have any questions.
Thank you very much.
All right, I think my fellow councillors have addressed pretty much everything. Oh, I apologize.
Because she's looking at me. Looking right at me like...
No, no, do you have questions?
I can't hear any of you. You're not speaking, your microphones. No idea what you're talking about.
Do you have any, do you have any questions for Ms. Cunningham?
No.
Great. The only question that I would add is, just in general, in general terms, what do you view as the role of the council in the city?
Oh, I think it's to support the city workers and to support the residents. I think that's really what has been missing in our lives, and I think it's why you were all elected. It's to facilitate the change and to listen to people and help them problem solve. Because we have some real issues, and we need some people that will work together, shoulder to shoulder, to work out those issues and come up with some solutions.
Thank you so much. Are we ready to...
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sandy Cunningham to the open city council position.
Okay.
Okay. A motion on the floor is to appoint Sandra Cunningham to our open city council seat. We will do a roll call vote. Councillor Gerhardt. Councillor Tysoe. Councillor President Braverman.
Yes.
Councillor Olson.
Yes.
Councillor Ardidi.
Yes.
And Mayor Kazmerski, yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Oh, I was like... Can you give it to me if you had it? Okay. Turn it off real quick.
Thank you.
I don't. I'm really nervous about it. I don't want to step all over it.
All I know is last time, I gave Randy way too many more. I'm going to go to stop there.
Am I going to do that? Am I sitting right in here? Is this our open spot right here? Are you ready? Put yourself in the back of the chair, Ronnie. Thank you very much. Okay. And I just say I will. I think while we wait for Ronnie, why don't we just take a five-minute recess? That way, if anybody wants to stand up and stretch their legs...
Well, we can be in contact in about five minutes when he gives that.
So...
Thank you very much. I'm just going to hang out here a little bit. There is a sign up, she's at 6:30 open forum. There's a sign up, she's standing outside for 6:30 open forum.
Hey, Ronnie, are they due?
Yeah, I'm old. Raise your right hand. I'm going to do...
Oh, is this one right?
I'm going to do it like this. I, Sandra Cunningham.
I, Sandra Cunningham.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will.
That I will.
For the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
Faithfully fulfill.
Faithfully fulfill.
And discharge.
And discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will support.
And that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the laws of the state of Oregon, the laws of the state of Oregon, and the ordinances of the... And the ordinances of the City of King. Thank you so much. Welcome.
Welcome, Sandy Cunningham. We're so happy you're here. And for the first time in a few months, we have a full council again. Okay, Sandy.
Yes.
I'm going to give this to you. Here's our agenda for today.
Thank you very much.
Um, the next item on our agenda is to discuss and consider KLC Business Solutions, addendum to professional services agreement. Katie, is Katie one of them? Did she want to... Hi, Katie. So I'm understanding this is an extension to your agreement, correct?
Yes. It, the agreement requires an official extension, even though the contract still maintains a 30-day opt-out kind of cancellation clause at any time. So, it's kind of just an official, we're going to extend it. But again, it's not, you're not committing to another 12 months. Although I'm, I hope to fulfill the needs in the next 12 months as well.
So, just to clarify, this is a one-year extension, but there is a 30-day clause in there. So that's what you're...
Yeah.
Question?
Katie, this is your business. So we're approving you or different... So now this is another third party, and I thought they were...
No, this is me. It's me. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Carpenter.
That's me.
So this is you?
Yes. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Katie?
So when you say a 30-day clause, I've read most of this agreement. And that's just, if we need to get out of it, or if you want to get out of it, we have to give you or us 30 days' notice.
Yes.
And, and we're extending it for a year, though.
Yes. But again, you're still not, it's not like if you decide to opt out in nine months and, you know, it's not working, you can still cancel on 30 days' notice. You don't have, you're not committing to a minimum of 12 months, if that makes any sense. But the agreement does need to, the arrangement extends for 12 months, if that makes sense.
That's pretty standard, isn't it?
Councillor Tysoe.
Um, two things. I am, I am so grateful that you have represented us to this point in time because there were a lot of loose ends that needed fixing for a whole huge variety of reasons. So thank you so much for all of the work that you have done to help King City and our budget because it's been amazing, and I'm looking forward to the RFP process that we have coming up. So, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, my pleasure. It's, yeah, you're not kidding. There's not a shortage of issues that we've addressed.
Katie, we really are looking for your recommendations. Like we talked at the last meeting about getting the financials in a place where city council leaders can access them on a regular basis and make sure that we are really providing that transparency piece of where the money is going. You know, when we're asked to approve, you know, for example, an additional 600 or 200 or 80,000 in attorney fees, we'd like to be able to see which attorney, what that breakdown is, what the invoices look like. And this is a way you can assist city council to get to that transparent place. We would really ask you to indulge in.
We are looking at, there needs to be some training. And in fact, the staff was never even trained on the reporting. So we want to make sure that we can train you appropriately to get access to the accounting system to be able to run those reports and have that transparency. Regarding copies of invoices and level of detail, I can't speak to that because certain, specifically, you bring up legal invoices, and there's confidentiality and privacy rules that need to be adhered to, and the invoices are not going into the accounting system for that reason. So, but you can see, there's an invoice, here's the vendor, this is the amount, this is how it was split in the accounts. So that level of detail is in the system. And then, as appropriate, you can request backup as needed. I can't really speak to the level of detail that can be provided, but certainly access to the system to see the level of detail is possible. Just, again, not invoice level detail, if that makes sense.
Well, we can talk to our council. The city council is the client, so we should have full access to the invoices. They're not private to us because we're the client. But we can take that out with our council and, you know, get that worked out. But we really appreciate how you're working with us, and we look forward to hearing when the training will take place and when we can access this, and we hope for this soon. Thank you.
Councillor Olson, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I guess, since our hourly rate...
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I, I'm straining because like I am trying to just focus because you're very quiet.
Can you hear me now? Well, it was, uh, hourly rate may increase up to 7%. How much was the actual increase?
That is the scale that you see, and that, there's a schedule in there, and that is the scale. There's a, there's a schedule that shows the, the fiscal years is the 7%.
So it is automatic, 7% each year?
Yes, it, well, it's only been a year, but.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions before we? All right, at this point, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the agreement extension?
I'll second that.
Get a motion for a second.
I would motion to approve, um, this extension.
I'll second that.
Well, let's, hold on, can we re, can we restate the, the motion to, um, KLC Business Solutions addendum?
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the addendum to the professional services agreement between the City of King City and KLC Business Solutions.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, motion on the floor is to approve the, um, addendum to professional services agreement between the City of King City and KLC Business Solutions. We will do roll call vote. Counselor Gerhart?
Yes.
Counselor Cunningham?
Yes.
Counselor Tysoe?
Yes.
Counselor President Braverman?
Yes.
Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Counselor Ardidi?
Yes.
Mayor Kazmierski?
Yes.
Motion passes, zero. All right, last item on our agenda is a discussion on a community poll. Um, in our last, I don't know if it was the last session or the one before that, we've had quite a few meetings lately. Um, we had talked about really wanting to create a short-term strategic plan for the city, and one of the aspects to that is getting community input on what the community feels should be accomplished, short-term. Um, it was brought up that we should do a poll. Is Erin here? She's not here, is she? Okay, um, our PIO, Erin Carey, she did send me information about a specific company that could provide that service, um, to send out a poll. It does look a little bit costly, there's a few different options. So at this point, I think that I, I would like her to probably provide that information to the council so that everybody can look at it, you know, and decide if that is a direction we would like to go, to get the community involved, or if there are other options that are.
I would love to have her address this, and our public information officer, Lieutenant, because if she, is she online?
Is she online?
If not, I, I wanna find out if we could use something like Survey Monkey or something that's not gonna cost the city money. We have options, I know how to use Survey Monkey, we saw, no, you know how to do it. Um, but it's really imperative, I don't wanna get caught up in lots of meetings over this. I wanna get a poll out there. Um, maybe our, our try to life could help us with the polls. Um, I think there are many ways to get, um, you know, just a form that we could put out there that people could fax in or scan in or, you know, text in to us with their feedback. I think it's really important to know and let the residents know that we are not only listening to them, but we're asking them to give us feedback on what are some of their most high priority items that the city should be working on. Um, we wanna work in tandem with our external customers and really find out what they want.
So, would there be anything wrong with us members of city council going door to door and asking people and surveying them?
I don't think anecdotal evidence is, you know, unnecessary. I think, yeah, absolutely, that's one way we can, um, get, get information. I think, yes, yeah, I would love for Erin to provide us with maybe a range of options, from hiring somebody to help us do it, which seemed a little expensive, and we have a lot of expenses right now, to, you know, something that would be more manageable, but would still provide us with a good amount of information to get us moving forward.
There's a couple of things also that I'd like to add after this, is I think we need a press release.
Yeah.
A press release to go out to the public. I think it should cover a myriad of things about what all, all the city council is working on, and include the fact that the new regime or city council members are inviting the public to give us their feedback immediately. Um, we definitely want the, uh, the public to know that, you know, we just ratified the include union contract, we want the public to know, um, you know, that we're working on safe sidewalks, we want the public to know that we're working on all of these projects. I could make a list for you, I could care, I mean, I could put together, in fact, I think I need some news, I could read my news to you.
Didn't I hear some talk about maybe the mayor coming out with a letter?
Yeah.
In the mail, uh, state of the city sort of a letter?
Like the community talks?
Yeah, exactly. I think that'd be a capital idea.
So I have a concern about polling. The only concern, and I think polling is a great idea, but, sorry, I think polling is a great idea, but I think that when, if people, if, let's say you get 2,000 cards back in the mail, if you don't act, it needs to be very well communicated on how we're going to act on that. Because if people say X, Y, Z, and we only focus on X, they're gonna get discouraged and think we're not doing our job.
Sure, sure. No, that's a really good point. I think that it would, um, speaking to whether that would be the specific input we get, is that something that would go towards a short-term strategic plan or a more long-term? So I think it would, we, we need information first, right? And then.
It needs to be communicated. Yeah. These are the four things that we picked. I just picked that arbitrarily, but these are the four things, and this is our top priority. And, you know, next year when we poll, you can tell us how we did.
Yeah, and we had, we had discussed doing that in a work session, once we had, you know, the information.
I think that if we get a press release out, and, and maybe our partners, the try to life could help, that, you know, um, that we are doing, we look at the PSP, that we have retained the search for improvement to help us bring the best candidate for a new city manager is ongoing. Um, that the city council is working with some outside vendors and committee members to help fix our municipal code and our charter for consistency and to, and to ensure proper checks and balances. Um, we want the, our public to know that we're working on safe sidewalk projects and see if the, the city can help, um, to create some of the sidewalk repair costs for many of our residents. This is a big issue, all the issue areas are talking about it, there are other issues. I think a press release would get the word out. People don't know what's going on. Uh, a lot of it, you can say, you know, people aren't coming to the meetings, they're not listening to the city council, but we also have a duty, we have a lot of seniors in our community, a lot of them are not technologically, you know, feeling comfortable, some have mobility issues. I don't wanna judge people, I wanna let them know in several different methodologies. But the city council is a new city council, it's open to hear the people. We are for the people, we run on a platform that we're for the people, by the people, and we need to stand by that. And we have hired now a public information officer, she seems very qualified, very good, I'm very impressed with her, but now it's time to get the word out and get it out loud.
I will follow up with her.
Yeah, I, I think for, yeah, that's very well said. I think, um, you know, as council, we would love to direct Carey to, um, come up with a press release that includes all the many things that we're working on, as well as options for getting the community involved that we can just keep moving forward. I mean, there are a lot of good things happening, and we should share it with the.
I didn't connect everybody to her, I think.
Yeah, yep.
This Saturday, I'm gonna be at the Portland, um, I mean, uh, King City.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. Is there something that can say for your report?
Um, I wanna put on the press release.
Oh, okay.
If it could go out, I don't know. Um, if it can, if a press release can get out, I was planning to be at the, at King City Farmers Market, um, on Saturday morning at 10:30. People wanna come out and tell me whatever's on their mind, they're welcome to.
I have one more thought in, in that vein. Uh, Counselor Braverman, you and I are both designated as the coordinators with the HOA.
Yeah.
That, that would be a very good vehicle for you and I to tell them, each HOA meeting, what's going on in city council. So we need to make sure we attend those.
Yeah, some of the HOAs allow us to talk about what's going on.
Uh, 10:30 until 11:00.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll hang out there for an hour, 10:30 to 11:30.
KCCA publishes a monthly newsletter, so something could be published in that.
Good idea.
And it was just really, oh, and by the way, Ronnie, um, I gotta complete that the park, I guess our park usually has a container with updated, um, agendas, and it's not being updated, but you know what we're talking about?
Yeah, there's a bulletin board out there. Okay.
Chief Acting City Manager, we're getting complaints, and this is fun at the park, I have no idea what they're talking about.
He's writing as fast as he can.
All right, let's go ahead and, uh, good to close discussion around community involvement. Let's move on to police chief's report, as you are furiously writing.
Oh, well. I'm gonna do that tonight again, if you don't mind, yeah. So, uh, school started on Tuesday, um, getting a little crazier on the, on the streets around Deer Creek. King City Police Department is partnering with Deer Creek to run a controlled crosswalk and traffic detail on Tuesday. So myself and Officer Kazmierski and Officer Haynes and our PIO, Erin Carey, were out there, working the crosswalk with our best on, um, making sure all the kids got to school safely on their first day. No issues, um, not bragging, but it was pretty smooth. Um, but no, it went very well, we had no, they talked in principle, no issues, um, on the first day of school, so, um, moving on to the next thing. So we are gonna be, Sergeant Aragoni here is gonna be heading up a community safety and scam seminar session, question and answer session. I haven't decided we're gonna do it, could be here, could be at the KCCA. Put some flyers outside, if you wanna grab one on your way out, just kinda gives you an idea of what we're covering. There's a whole bunch of, there's a list of different scams that are active, some are older that show their face again, some, some are very new. So kinda get, we'll go over all the stuff we see, sit there and answer questions, and then we'll just find the best way to push it out there, and we'll take a date that's far enough out that people can plan to attend that, so. And lastly, we, based on recent complaints with, and the fact that school is back in session, um, we are gonna be, I have asked the officers to spend part of their shift the next couple of weeks, um, on, uh, 131st, and enforcing that 25, in that 20 mile an hour school zone, uh, in that area, so each officer is putting stuff on that detail. And then, while school is during drop-off and pickup, so early mornings and afternoons, we, the officers through the entire school year are, are to be present unless they're on a priority call, are to be present at school during those times.
On the weekends too, when they're taking over, people are going 60 miles an hour down that hill.
Yeah, so we, yeah, um, I did pull the data, we, we stopped about 70 cars on 131st in that area last, since, since the beginning of the year. We're gonna focus on that more, especially during the school year, but yes. During the weekends, we focus a little more on the parking lot there, because things, I know that the parking lot are at 2:00 AM, um, and, you know, we try to deter that kind of activity, so, uh, we'll be around.
Thank you. All right, city managers' report.
Personally, I'd like to say thank you for the ratification of the CBA agreement, that's kinda all I've been doing, and is being involved with that. You can see that a couple of teams took out, um, with all the different copies and redos. Um, so that's basically been involved with, obviously, I've been meeting with Ronnie and, and Max a lot, um, again, getting educated by the fire hose, and, uh, again, just wanna say good praise because they've done a phenomenal job on access buried with, you know, 250 permits, you know, that are going on down, uh, in construction, and, you know, and we also have to, other things to ask for. Those that come into the city hall, you'll see them, they're running around, they're doing lots of stuff, and so it's a lot of different hats that everybody's wearing. And so I just wanna, again, you know, the entire staff, from Mira to Katie to Diana, and, you know, Erin here, they've all, you know, been doing a wonderful job, and, you know, get enough praise for what they're doing, especially when I come in and I start asking stuff, and I start asking questions, and has to be explained to the police chief level, um, you know, for what they do, and, so it's been very nice. And so I'll have more on the 17th, so we've been having a lot of meetings, so we've been coming, updating.
Awesome, thank you, chief. Pass a fork?
Um, well, from the community development side of things, we had a planning commission meeting last week, uh, as King City terrorists begin to develop areas that need to be addressed, areas that we could maybe improve the code. Uh, two of the main takeaways from that meeting were potentially developing a parks master plan for the area, uh, which would involve, um, the next step for that was I was going to draft a resolution, bring it to the planning commission to work with them about, and then ultimately take that resolution and bring it to the city council, and have you guys vote on it if you wanted to devote resources to doing something like that, so that could be on the docket coming up soon. And then another part of that meeting was also discussing some incentives in our code or in our system development charges, um, or potentially making it easier to build affordable housing, uh, or subsidized housing in the city. I'm not quite sure how to do that, but the process for implementing that would be similar to where we would have a resolution that would authorize staff to go out and receive grants and technical assistance. So that was the big two takeaways that I got from the planning commission meeting last week. Construction for the stormwater improvements over on Crown Drive are complete, they went over without a hitch as far as.
Good.
This is it, everybody. Um, so, quote me on this, maybe, uh, I believe it's starting next week. What, the paving? The paving is starting on Monday next week.
And that was gonna be?
For Crown Drive, uh, for King Richards, uh, and then 124.
And what was the timeline for that again? I forget, did you say it was like a month for, oh, a week, a week, okay.
So, do you have a, a schedule of other paving that could be done this year? That's it for this year. A lot of the resources for street improvements, most, there were like maybe five or six streets, but since the stormwater was so expensive, then we had to devote a lot of the budget to that. The last, last meeting, uh, one of the open forum speakers, John Forsack, I believe, talked about looking for a schedule for paving and what it would look like. Yeah, we have a schedule online, but it needs to be seriously updated. Dave is generally the one who does that schedule because he's always on patrol throughout the city, um, and, you know, he's been out on medical leave, so. So maybe I'll get it from you, because I'd like to get back to this John guy and, and respond to his concerns. Yeah, send me an email. Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then just from my, you know, day to day, I'm still doing, as the chief mentioned, permitting checklist and grant coordination for the grants that the cities already received.
Next, we have mayors and councillors' reports. Um, then, uh, Counselor Ardidi, do you have any, anything to report?
Well, I was just outside, now I'm back inside. My, uh, cancer treatments are not going that well, I, my body temp. It's, uh, probably postponed my radiation because my stroke caused me to have some tendencies to be weak, and the radiation process can compromise my system, so, um, I might be going to California to work with some people down there. Uh, I'm doing as best as I can. That's it.
Sorry to hear that. Okay. Absolutely. Um, Counselor Olson?
I have nothing to report.
Counselor President?
Um, I just wanna see if we can maybe get some kind of a list going that Max just mentioned about, um, you know, during repairs, I noticed that Edgewater at the semi, I call it the semicircle, at 136 and Fisher Road, all of the lines that are there for pedestrians to cross are pretty much worn out. Um, so, you know, these are the kind of things, I know Dave is out, that if somebody could...
Um, so, you know, these are the kind of things, I know Dave is out, that if somebody could, you know, take over the duties, or if we need to hire someone temporarily, there are quite a large number of needs, and I'd really like to see us start to compile that list in some kind of order by priority. Um, I'm getting a lot of residents talking to me about the fact that this, these things just seem to be going into this repair, and they don't really know, like, who should they call to report it, or what can be done. Also, I really wanna thank, we kind of, Say Larry did mention to him about people complaining about people speeding, and there just doesn't seem to be enough bodies out there, so I have tend to look into making some recommendations and proposals for either speed cameras, or speed bumps, or whatever we can do to put on our forecast down the road, no pun intended, to really help, to curtail. These speedings down the 131, there's just so many crosswalks, and the speed that I see people going, we would never be, I've almost been hit myself twice, um, you wouldn't be able to stop if anybody was in the crosswalk, and I just don't even care. I mean, I've been in the crosswalk, and it just buzzers, I mean, literally, the car brushes me as it goes by me. We've gotta do something, 'cause we have so many children and so many animals out there. It just, it just can't be deferred any longer, and somebody's gonna have to step up. And also, so I'd like to also find out how Proffman is doing, if he's gonna be talking to us, councilors, I know nobody's talked to me yet, but maybe we could get an update on that. And I just think that it's just really important that the public realize that, um, you know, I've mentioned this already, but we wanna overemphasize, because people have told me that they've just given up coming to City Council. I mean, I feel like it doesn't, doesn't matter what they say or do, the City Council's gonna do what it wants, and I wanna change that perception, so I'd like to hear from our audience and our constituents as to how we can do that.
Councilor Tyson?
Um, right this minute, I don't have anything new, other than that I'm gonna be doing the LOC conference in October, and there's a, they have policy advisory board meeting on the 11th, and so, at the 17th, I'll have more information.
I have it on my calendar.
Oh, that is the local LOC, our local two, um...
Do we have to, are we paid on it? How are we?
Um...
Ronnie's got it.
Ronnie's got it.
City staff.
I thought we had a supply on that one.
Well, we are the host, and so we should, and I was gonna get together with Ronnie, and I was gonna make a couple of suggestions, 'cause I would like to see us use somebody in the King City Shopping Center, and that, that was my thought, and I was gonna get together with you on that. But we need to have a closer head count before we can finalize that.
When does registration close for that, do you know, Ronnie? 'Cause it is, it's the 17th.
It's probably up to the 17th.
I usually try to, I usually try to get it.
Right now, we have 10. Yeah, well, you typically, the ones I've gone to have been about a dozen people. Yeah, it's, it's not, because it's a very localized group, it's not the whole big LOC.
All right, thank you. Councilor Cunningham, do you have anything to report?
I have nothing to say.
Great, you, Councilor Gerhardt?
Quick point of order. I think when we have these meetings, we're talking to the public, so we should all be using our microphones, and we stepping up to them so that everybody can hear what we're saying. We're not talking to each other, we're talking to the public. Speaking of the public, I am so grateful that there's a full house here today, and there was, I think the last meeting was a full house too.
Yes.
So, somebody's doing something right, if able to drag you guys out, uh, to see us chat. Um, also, um, I know a guy who knows a guy. And I hate it when I start, start, it's like, can't remember the guy's first name, last name is Fitz Simmons. I think he's with the Twelton River Keepers. Does that sound right, Mike? There he is. So he knows a friend of mine, and, and they talked and suggested that maybe, um, he would take City Council on a canoe right on the Twelton River. Does that sound right?
Absolutely.
All right.
Good point.
I think it'd be fun, and there would be light jackets too. They'd be meant.
This morning on the Twelton.
All right, um...
And that's it.
Okay, and so for Mayor's report, um, a couple things, I will also be attending the LOC Small Cities on the 17th, and, um, one workshop at the LOC Conference in October for, I think it's called Courageous Leadership, so, you know, much information about that as I can get, I'm willing to take, so, um, taking, taking time off my, you know, personal job to be there and continue trying to be the best they can for all of you, so. Um, the other thing, uh, speaking of Proffman, had a meeting with him, uh, them earlier today with Ronnie, and we did discuss the need for stakeholder interviews, and, um, those can be done either via Zoom or in person, ideally in person, but we would need to find, like, one day for him to come and stack them. Um, he has Monday and Tuesday open, or we can do something the week of the 15th. Um, my preference would be that we move this forward as quickly as we can, so our timeline doesn't get pushed back. So if we can't do in person on Monday or Tuesday, I would prefer that we schedule Zoom on Monday or Tuesday.
Are we doing them together?
No, they're gonna be all separate, 30 minutes, 30 minutes each, so everybody can give their, um, their views on what, what is needed in a, in a city manager. It's also for, oh, perfect, thank you. So it looks like Monday wouldn't be in person all day. Um, Tuesday, 3 to 5, so we could stack a few interviews during that time.
I could try to come over.
Would anybody else be able to come in person on Tuesday between 3 and 5?
I can.
Okay? Senator, would you be able to? Will these all be separate meetings? If not, we can, sorry, just trying to- Yeah, they're all, they're all separate. Thank you. Yeah, separate 30 minute, 30 minute sessions.
How many will it be Tuesday between 3 and 5?
Um, it would be the stakeholder interview that Proffman is going, he, they're gonna interview each councillor separately, as well as city staff, and, so, it'd be a 30-minute increment.
I think so.
Okay, so, um, no, that's coming Tuesday the night.
Can we have a Proffman? Please put a search on, how many people?
Um, I think what we could do, if this sounds okay to everybody, is we could try to book him for Tuesday, September 9th, to be here between 3 and 5, and then we could send out some type of sign up, so everybody can sign up for their 30-minute increments, and whatever is left over, hopefully he can get with city staff during that time, and then whoever's not able to make it, we can, um, send out times for a Zoom.
Somebody's gonna sign up right now.
Does that work? No, we'll have Ronnie send it out. Okay, so let's, let's go ahead and, um, and do that. So Tuesday, we'll do some, start some stakeholder interviews, based off of that, they'll develop, um, the, the profile and... And I asked him for an updated time, timeline, because the original one given to us, I think, had stakeholder interviews scheduled last week, so we are pushed a little bit out, and I believe he sent it like minutes before the meeting started, so that is something that I will share, um, or that Ronnie can send out, that, the updated timeline, so. Um, that is all that I have for my report, and I think now's the time we can adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Expecting the motion.
Hey, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, okay, meeting adjourned. Um, let's go ahead and take 10 minutes, if you all don't mind, and then we will jump into our work session. Does that work for everybody? You can stand, stand up for a second.
...... Well, we wish you a good night. That's the call on NBC. Good. Six twenty, right? It's a long six, so it's long, so I think it is separate in between these two programs. Right? On top of that, so some signal, we're going to run for the best twenty minutes to bring the deep point along, but it's not surprising, so we could stop the other same last year. It's all worth it, but basically, we're just... Well, that's so bad that the way the fiscal most challenging defense they've had in years, which made people on defense alike, who are part of the steel plate at a very high level, and go down to get a second year, and then have a chance on special. And it's supported by so much interest. But we've got a lot of potential, a lot of capacity, so long-term testing has been almost the last thing you can say that we can do that, so I'm sure two times, three, four times, I'm going to be hard to lose on my experience and getting those. And I hope that's all you have. So, I'm going to say, and then we find one. So, yeah. Thank you, double important, we have this package, uh, space you want, I've always had, well, most are here, so you know. Now, you should say you're loving it, and I just need it. Get so much more. Talk to the department about it.
Send the cascades to PDX from repeated hills to your kitchen. We recycle like liquid. That's why recycling companies, governments, and brands are all joining together to create change, to make recycling better, like expanding services so more people can recycle. You can find the latest updates at recycleon.org/working. It's a mountain to the bed under your desk. Together, we can do this.
We're the captain of this, uh, this may well... Okay, I have all we can. All right, everybody. I left my gamble up there for sake of, you know, for the unity. There we go. Um, let's go ahead and begin our work session seven oh one to listen to a wonderful presentation about... Starting us off.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing us time tonight. My name is John Cook, and seated beside me is Janet Black. I would ask you all to please hold your questions until the end. That time, we would be happy to answer any questions that our presentation did not cover. So, please either write them down or anything else. We appreciate that.
I apologize. Sorry, we didn't do roll call.
I will.
It's on the agenda. Thank you.
You're awesome. That's why I had to hear. Me and Jack here.
I can do, I can do roll call.
Thank you.
Here. Here. Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Braverman.
Here.
Counselor Tyso.
Here.
Counselor Cunningham.
Here.
Counselor Gerhardt.
Here.
Merrick Zermansky.
Here.
And I would also like to say that we will have open forum as well. It's just going to come after all the presentations to give everyone a chance to formulate questions and thoughts, so. And I have my council president keep me in check here. Okay, I apologize. Continue. Thank you.
That's actually, that's not the PowerPoint. That's the, that's the words I'm reading.
I think open up the one from the agenda link.
Oh, it's a...
It's on the thumb drive.
I said two. One was PowerPoint, one was the PDF. That's the PDF. Uh, the PowerPoint's what I wanted.
It was in Dropbox, right?
Correct, yeah. So, it's in the email, um... It's also right here, if it's easier.
Came with one, too.
It looks like the one that you sent around.
They're both on there. One's a PPT at the end extension, the other's the PDF at the extension, so.
Counselor Adidi, do you want to mute yourself, please?
Want to mute me? I'm hurt, what'd you say?
Would you mind muting? I think we're hearing background music, or music.
Noise.
Noise.
John Cook, are you looking for your PowerPoint of Wildlife Corridor?
Uh, I, I... I'm waiting for Ronnie to load it up. Correct. Counselor Adidi.
I see it, okay.
She's going to say, where's the old chart?
I want a new chart.
Yeah.
Because I want to know how these people look.
Great.
Is there an orange chart? Yeah.
I can draw one, but it looks like five bucks.
Is that it?
It keeps changing.
Yeah. And then go to play. Should be the up...
So, it would have, uh...
Bycho.
Yeah. Bycho.
The council, yeah.
Like the second and third one.
Yeah.
Do it on the back for one minute.
Is there one online?
City manager. Bycho. Is that it?
Because you want the staff.
Gotcha.
It's like the higher...
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. All right.
All right, you've got to fix the zoom.
Because I understand the city, I understand the city council.
Yeah, the city council, city manager, and that's it.
Correct.
Slide in versus, like, it though.
Yeah, then you have to look at it. Perfect about... All right, Rachel.
He's trying to...
Sort of are.
Over large, yeah.
You just slide down, okay. All right. Um, thank you. So, one of the agenda items that came out earlier stated this is an MLG presentation. This is not an MLG presentation. Metropolitan Land Group and New Home Company convened a work group of stakeholders to explore and understand underlying concerns and develop recommendations for the city council. This presentation includes two recommendations for city council's consideration regarding Beep and Road and the proposed extension of Fisher Road. Metropolitan Land Group and New Home Company facilitated the first meeting, and Kearns and West, a neutral third-party facilitation firm, facilitated the remaining four meetings. Each meeting was two hours in length, and it had a majority of the work group members in attendance at each one. At two of the meetings, their engineers were also in attendance for any questions we had. Next slide. Slide, so it's a video, though. How are you going to do that without being in a slideshow? There you go. Background and Purpose. Our work group met five times between September twenty twenty-four and March of twenty twenty-five, and monthly since then until we were able to prepare this presentation. The goal was to identify two to five recommendations for the proposed Fisher Road extension design and configuration. Recommendations needed to consider: environmental impacts, regulatory requirements, community benefits and impact, financial costs, community support, and feasibility. So, we're, we're back a slide. There you go. All that was while the video was playing. This is actually from the Kingston Terrace Master Plan, and so we started with that because it was our shared vision. Our vision and values were connect livable neighborhoods and to protect and enjoy nature. Different other items that are in that master plan include featuring the Twelton River as the reason for being, integrate nature into developed areas, community of great neighborhoods, support all modes of transportation, and provide a complete network of streets and path types. Next slide. Imagine this, a new dock at King City Park. There is signage that describes the Twelton International River Trail. The paddlers launch and make their way upriver, where they immediately experience the quiet and calmness that is striking feature of the Twelton River. Pedestrian bike path from existing King City to the new town center in the west. This bike path goes through neighborhoods and natural areas connected with parks. There is signage describing how King City has protected the natural areas and how these areas in King City connect to the larger effort to protect the Twelton River watershed. This signage explains the balance between public access of parks and trails with the space that wildlife needs in conservation areas. An annual celebration at King City Park to showcase King City as a Tree City USA, a Bee City, a partnership with the Twelton River Keepers for equitable access of the river. Vehicle traffic within King City is calm. Vehicles are able, easily able to travel within King City. Vehicles traveling through King City are more likely to use Beep and Road. Next slide, please. Why Change? There's a section approximately four tenths of a mile of one road in the current plan that does not fit with our visions and values. This portion of the East-West Collector Road is close to the river, goes through the banks and conservation easement, and provides a direct connection between ninety-nine W and Roy Rogers Road. This does not fit King City's vision. It affects the wildlife with noise and light. It affects the fish and the river with road chemical runoff. It affects the people who are paddling on the river with noise. It attracts regional traffic seeking a quicker path to cut through our community, and it creates more traffic through existing neighborhoods affecting our livability. Next slide, please.
Recommendation?
A recommendation is to, A, is to remove a portion of the current East-West Collector Road and make the Northern Neighborhood Road the East-West Collector Road. Add a separate bike pedestrian path for improved connectivity along the current southern route, an alignment to be determined later. B, improve the capacity and flow of traffic along Beep and Road. Work with Washington County and ODOT, Oregon Department of Transportation, on improvements to ensure Beep and is the arterial and designed route, desired route for east-west traffic. Manage traffic signals along Beep and Road in a way that favors the east-west flow of traffic along the arterial. Keep flowing through, keep traffic flowing by using roundabouts and not stoplights to encourage east-west traffic and connectivity, which is something that is in Tiger's River Terrace two point oh plan. Prioritize transportation vehicle capacity improvements to Beep and ninety-nine W before improvements to Fisher Road and ninety-nine W. Next slide, please. So, this is the current plan that has gone through, that's in our master plan and our transportation system plan. And so, it shows the black road is the Collector Road, and as you can see, it goes through, the red area is the Bangston Conservation Easement, the green roads are neighborhood roads, and so that's the way it currently is planned now. Next slide, please. A proposed new road turns right at a hundred and thirty-seventh and goes up and then cuts across and avoids the Bangston Nature Area, and it also, we're doing this for two reasons. One, the main reason is to avoid the banks and nature area, and the secondary reason is to try and reduce cut-through traffic. The way the slide before was, they could go straight across, follow that road all the way out to Roy Rogers Road. This way, it would cause them to hopefully not want to meander through the city, and this way, it would make it harder for them to use it as cut-through, but still allow connectivity between current King City and the new town center area. Uh, next slide, please. So, in here, we're basically showing you the orange was what the old one was, the black is what the new one is, and so you can see that the change really is. There's a couple other minor changes that are in details, but that's the major change. So, the next slide, there you go. The road change plus Beep and improvements will encourage regional traffic to use Beep and Road where it belongs, provide internal connection between east and west sides of King City, better protect the Twelton River and wildlife habitat, provide an incredible opportunity for the community to enjoy and appreciate the river, and reduce the cost by eliminating the crossings of the deepest and widest ravines. Why wasn't this route chosen in the prior process? This route was not analyzed as an option for a Collector Road. It's a combination of the best parts of Alternatives Three and Four of the prior one. Does it meet regulatory requirements? Yes. We believe it meets King City's older connectivity, land use goals, and various agencies' regulatory requirements. It does not displace vulnerable community nor require demolition of current homes. It keeps the same housing density, which was a goal throughout the whole plan. Next slide, please. Does it meet circulation requirements? Yes, the alternative analysis studied the effects of the various alternatives on Beep and Fisher Road intersections. The current plan uses Alternative Two. Our proposed route uses combinations of Alternative Three North and Four. The tables in your handouts that you have compare the effects of the current versus our proposed plan, and the results are virtually the same. That in your handout looks, it's for something to look at later, not now, but I'll let you know which page it is. It's the one that has a lot of numbers and tables, so. It's, if not, um...
Hey, Bonnie, did you get a chart?
If...
Oh, but you didn't print it?
No. These are updated since then. Uh, next slide, please. It is that. Uh...
This is the updated.
Yeah. Entities that made comment on the effect of the current planned road on the Twelton River watershed and wildlife habitat included the Twelton River Keepers, Columbia Land Trust, Twelton River National Wildlife Refuge, Walton Soil and Water Conservation District, and the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife.
I was going to make a couple comments about that. We have someone from Twelton River Keepers here, and we have Jen from Columbia Land Trust, who will be talking about it later, so I'm not going to go into detail on that. But the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, and there's quotes in your package from each of these places, but I just wanted to highlight that the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife said, "Any development on the Bangston property will likely result in the loss of fish and wildlife habitat." Walton Wildlife Refuge said, "If the southernmost, if the southernmost rivers chosen implemented, the environmental impacts, and specifically the impacts to resources, expected in perpetuity, would be significant." And then I also wanted to comment on Walton Soil and Water Conservation Districts, who they're the ones who are restoring the property in the Bangston Nature Reserve. So, they have a thirty-year agreement, and they've taken out all the incentives, and they've been planning native plants, and they continue to plant native plants. They, I think about, they're up to about twenty thousand, maybe twenty-two thousand native plants, but they are planted because it's such an important, it's thirteen acres, but you'll hear later, it's connected, much bigger areas, so they think this is a very important piece, and they're restoring it, and it's... Okay.
Next slide, please. How can this change be made? A periodic review of the comprehensive plan is not required, so there is no need to wait until twenty thirty. I know originally, over the last few months, people were talking about, do we have to wait seven years? Do we have to do it on that year? Do we have to open the comp plan? Or how can we just change the TSP? All those discussions, and we can get through some more of that in Q and A, but a city can't amend a comprehensive plan at any time, but did not in... can't amend a comprehensive plan at any time, but did not need to wait till then. One of the other reasons we were talking about waiting till then was, maybe you wouldn't get a grant from an entity because they had just given you one the year before or two years before, and we can get into costs also later during Q and A. The New Home Company asked their traffic consultant, which is Kittleson Company, to put together the basic steps for the city to follow. Next slide, please. So, change can be made, the city already has the maps, and city planning will be able to head it. Number one, contact Glenn Boland at Oregon Department of Transportation to confirm that the city would like to do a minor legislative amendment to the TSB to change the alignment of future planned Collector Street within a small sub-area of the city, as well as to add slash modify some of the off-street bicycle and pedestrian routes in this small area. These are intended to be minor surgical changes consistent with what other cities are doing around the state, and primarily include some mapping and table edits. Number two, contact their local Department of Land Conservation Development, the LCD, representative and metro, and let them know the intent of doing this small minor legislative amendment. Number three, work with the Planning Commission to identify public engagement and hearing process to make the minor changes and make any refinements prior to drafting findings. Number four, prepare a marked-up and recommended change to the TSB with these minor changes. And number five, draft findings and hold a hearing first at Planning Commission and then City Council. All the necessary public and D L C D noticing will be required. Next slide, please. So our request to the City Council is to ask the city manager, number one, ask the city manager to direct staff to start the process of amending the transportation system plan, TSB, and the comprehensive plan with our proposed changes to the roads. The comprehensive plan includes items such as housing, parks, stormwater, trails, et cetera. Transportation system plan is just a piece of the whole comprehensive plan. Number two, consult with the King City Attorney on how to determine, how to prevent development from building roads that are in the current plan that will be changed with this amendment. Basically, how do we postpone allowing the whole comprehensive plan, TSB, from being built before these proposed changes are completed, as it could take three, six, nine months to get it through the whole process? And number three, develop a plan to implement recommendation B for Beet Bend Road, which is to improve the capacity and flow of traffic while lobbying for funding from federal, state, and regional partners, such as Washington County's Major Streets Transportation Improvement Program, MISTIP. So MISTIP right now is in their, I think it's 5H funding, five, two-year H, so I won't go too far in the weeds in the MISTIP, but MISTIP was originally funded by the citizens of Washington County to build transportation throughout the county. When Measure 5 and 50 came in, it took the funding of that and merged it into Metro, our Washington County's budget. And so each year, they have a library part that's rolled in, and they have a transportation part that's rolled in. That transportation part, they take every six or seven years and divide it up amongst the four regions, and say, they have $80 million, they'll give each region $20 million, and they'll build a road. So currently, they're just finishing, I think in 2026, it finishes the last MISTIP plan. They've already approved and are moving forward with the next one, which will start in 2027, and so that cycle, it will be another six years or so before that next cycle comes up. So it's the kind of thing that you have to start lobbying now, you have to talk with your other mayors at the Washington County Courting Committee, you've got to decide how you're going to split up your money, and it's the kind of thing that lobbying takes place along the way. Talk with the mayor of Tigard and say, hey, Beet Bend is important to you guys, too. We're going to need funding for that. We need you to step in and help us promote the funding of that. So it's the kind of thing is, that's a request. And along the way, if you have any other questions or things like that, you know, three months, six months from now, I would be glad to talk with you on any of those items. Thank you for your time and consideration. We now would like to have other speakers make a few comments before we go into our questions and answers.
Sure. I have a few maps to show the natural corridor, if you want to pass those down. I am a short one, I'm sorry, I didn't know that somebody was getting voted in. So.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Kelsey Shaw Nakama, and I am Policy Director at the Twolton River Keepers. On behalf of TRK, I would like to express our support of the council's invitation to community members to present a revision of King City's transportation system plan. Going back to when the original alternatives were presented, we have strongly supported Alternatives 3 North and 4. This plan appears to align with those alternatives. Our reason for supporting this alignment is simple. Our mission is to protect and restore the Twolton River watershed, and this alignment presents the best opportunity to do so. I speak to you tonight to share some of the reasons why we were and remain strongly opposed in the, to the current alignment of the east-west Collector Road. As you can see on those maps, the Twolton River is a critical wildlife corridor, with the Twolton River National Wildlife Refuge, Metro's Beet Bend, and Heritage Pine Natural Areas, and the Bangston Preserve providing an important spine for aerial wildlife to travel on. Proposed alignment of the east-west Collector Road fragments this wildlife corridor. Wildlife naturally follows streams and undisturbed habitats. As it is currently proposed, the east-west Collector Road would undermine years of careful planning and the resources invested in the protection and restoration of these natural areas. The proposed Collector Road would also cross several streams that feed directly into the Twolton River. The banks and channels of these streams are already unstable due to erosion and will continue to widen until legacy stormwater issues are resolved. If a road is constructed over these streams, the land will eventually erode away beneath it. This poses not only a serious safety concern, but also harms downstream habitat and aquatic life within the Twolton River, as runoff from roads has been shown to carry harmful pollutants such as the contaminant 6 PPDQ that comes from tire debris. A similar number of housing units can still be built using one of the less environmentally harmful alternative routes. Imagine this new housing being adjacent to a gem of a protected natural amenity, an incredible win-win scenario for the city as it attracts new residents. Twolton River Keepers have been supportive of and encouraged by King City's efforts to develop a formal launch at King City Community Park and its leadership in the development of the regional west-side trail. The alignment proposed by this community group tonight would significantly bolster the river-adjacent amenities that the city has been working towards. Importantly, this new proposed alignment still allows for the same housing density, and it does so in a matter that will continue to protect the Twolton River and the Bangston Nature Preserve as critical wildlife corridors. We believe the opportunity to live close, in close proximity to protected natural area would also serve as a significant draw for prospective King City residents. Council members, I was a little, I was usurped a little bit by your comment earlier, but I invite each of you to join us on the. Come and paddle through this lovely, quiet section of the river, where the honks of car horns are replaced by those of geese, and the shade of buildings is replaced by that of trees. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak. We strongly support this important next step to reconsider the proposed east-west Collector Road, and we look forward to years of continued partnership.
I have slides.
You have slides, okay.
I have a quick question. Is our, our.
Hold our.
Our city attorney, sorry.
She is.
She's online.
Yep, she is online. No. I did not think I was going to be able to come tonight. So, Madam Mayor and councilors, thank you so much for having me. Thank you guys for inviting me. This is sort of funnily titled because it's sort of a reintroduction because, due to regime change, as you eloquently, eloquently put it earlier. So I'm going to take us on a slight detour as I introduce the land trust, but I promise we won't loop back. So I'm Jen Zarnock, I'm with Columbia Land Trust. This month, I've been with land trust for 15 years, it kind of boggles my mind, and our mission is to conserve and care for the vital lands, waters, and wildlife of the Columbia River region through sound science and strong relationships. I need the next slide. Usually very loud. We do this in three ways, through conserving land, and typically that's through, I mean, some moving, so I feel a little, through acquiring property in what we call C title, where we own the property outright, and also through conservation easements like the Bangston Conservation Easement. We steward a lot of land, and then also through outreach and engagement. And one of the big ways is through our Backyard Habitat program that you may have heard of in partnership with Portland Bird Alliance. Next slide. So where do we work? We work in a really large area, so we work roughly 50 miles north and south of the Columbia River from the mouth at Astoria all the way to the Columbia Plateau across five eco-regions because we've merged Willamette Valley and Puget Truff for our purposes, and over the past 34 years, we've conserved 60,000 acres. Of that 60,000, about half of that is held by other entities, where we either transferred property or assisted them to conserve it, and we, we own 104 properties that totals just about 30,000 acres and steward that, and 56 easements totaling just over 8,000 acres throughout this area. So the yellow on that map is the, let me just track, yes, that is land that we hold and care for. And then the brown, it's sort of hard to see, but that brownish area is the four counties where Backyard Habitat Certification Program, is anybody in here in Backyard Habitat Certification? Okay, all right, yep. So, and this, this slide is, those numbers are maybe a few months old, so it's probably changed since then because they're constantly working on this, but over 13,000 enrollments across over 3,000 acres in those four counties. Next slide. This is just another depiction of where we work, and is really just to say, we are guided by a 25-year, very ambitious conservation agenda, and those sort of colorful blobs are conservation opportunity areas. If you're familiar with the Oregon Conservation Strategy, in Oregon, we pretty much adopted those COAs with some minor tweaks here and there, which incidentally are in the process of being updated right now. We are working on, like you, our five-year strategic plan update and sort of just reviewing where things might tweak a little bit. Next slide. So throughout the Willamette, throughout our region, honestly, and more specifically the Willamette Valley, Twolton River, for all these amazing reasons that Kelsey pointed out, Kelsey, right? Okay. Elevates as a top priority, and in the Willamette Valley, this is one of our, I think we have two, three sort of group, what we call Group One, our top priority areas where we're working in a focused way, because of the riparian forests, floodplains, lakes, and wetlands, the important in-stream habitat, oak and prairie habitat as well, and then the ongoing threats of habitat loss from development and water pollution. We could not do the work that we do here with all of our incredible partners, and so there's a ton of us who all have this shared goal of protecting the Twolton, and I love listening to your vision. That's such a beautiful synopsis of why this place is so important. Next slide. And so just a note on, but again, I feel like I don't need to say it, why, why are healthy floodplain forests and wetlands important? Of course, they're important for species diversity and refuge, preventing erosion, which here is a really big deal, as you know. They provide shade and wood for the river, insects to support river life, and it's really important filtration. I added, it's a little bit covered, but that little clip in the upper right-hand corner, it's hard to see, that's further upstream, that yellow is actually our Solity Prairie property, one of the, one of the properties that we own in the Twolton, and that's all floodwater, and so it's just, whenever I look at videos like that, I'm struck by how important it is that we're protecting these floodplain, floodplain properties for conservation to give the river room to move and protecting development like we see in other places where there's one. Next slide. So, that your, your slide, Kelsey, was, your map was perfect because that was even more beautiful depiction. This is showing, so in the Twolton River watershed, we care for two, three properties that sort of boot over there above Palmish Prairie is what we call our rainbow property, and then in the previous slide, that bigger property is at Solity Prairie, and that's further upstream, but I just wanted to zoom, zoom in here and look at the complex of conservation lands that Bangston Easement is a part of. None of these properties works on their own, but when we start building these corridors of connectivity, it's really quite amazing and, and critical, and you see all the partners there, Metro Clean Water Services, Twolton Soil and Water, and the Wetlands Conservancy, and Fish and Wildlife, so there's the refuge there, and then right across from Bangston South is Metro's Heritage Pine Natural Area, which in some ways is a collab with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And I'm going to loop to Bangston shortly, but next slide. First, I wanted to just talk about what is a conservation easement, because I feel like I did not know what a conservation easement was before I worked for Columbia Land Trust 15 years ago, and there's often a lot of confusion about it. So this is a voluntary tool where, that is permanently legally binding, and it's agreement, an agreement that a landowner has as a qualifying organization. So it's a legal contract where the landowner says, here is my bundle of sticks, and I'm going to donate or sell to you this portion, which is usually all of the impactful rights, right, and then I'm going to retain ownership and some subset of rights. It is a forever interest in real, interest in real property, protecting whatever the specific conservation values are for that property. It is tailored to each property, and the land trust is legally obligated to defend the easement from violation of those terms. Next slide, please. What a conservation easement is not, at least the way that we do it, and most of our colleagues do it, is it is not temporary. It is not readily changeable, so neither the land trust nor the landowner can modify it easily to allow more uses than are defined in the terms. In fact, we, it can only be amended in certain cases, and then when it is amended, it typically has to increase the protections rather than decrease the protections, and it is not extinguishable without condemnation proceedings. So in the case of the proposed road eminent domain would have to be triggered to allow any kind of modification to the easement. Next slide, please. What is the land trust's role? So, and I'm sorry, this bullet is here a lot, but we are, it is just like to hammer home that we are legally obligated and responsible to defend the integrity in terms of the easement, even against landowners, right? Sometimes even the landowners with the best intentions flip up and make mistakes, and we work with them to correct them. So we monitor our easements at least once a year. I see I've had that, this hat for a long time. Thanks for bearing with my light protection, because that was from 2023. We are, and we act as a resource for landowners, so we work with landowners to help them when they have questions about the terms, and we, we work with them sometimes on restoration plans or connecting them with partners like the Twolton Soil and Water Conservation District in the case of Bangston, to bring resources to help enhance this already conserved place. In our case, we also hold something called TerraFirma Insurance, which is just a minor detail, that gives us additional legal support to make sure that we can properly defend our easements. Next slide, please. And here is the Bangston Conservation Easement. So we see it here, across from these other conserved properties, part of that connected area. Bangston was protected in 2009, it's about 13 acres, and its conservation values are the forested wetland, riparian forest, creeks and floodplain habitat, wildlife habitat, and then scenic views of this incredible natural space. The initial transaction, funding was brought by Clean Water Services, so they actually hold third-party rights of enforcement on the easement, they're a party to the easement. And, you know, there's lots of details about can and can't happen on this property, but in a nutshell, it restricts all development, all road building, and all uses that would impact the conservation values of the property. And then the landowner retains ownership rights and can enjoy low-impact uses. Next slide, please. So as was mentioned, Clean Water Services originally brought some investment to conserve the property, and then in 2017, the property was enrolled in the VEGVAC program, which is the soil and water conservation district and Clean Water Services funding. And as of 2023, so it's more since then, they had spent roughly $80,000 on restoration. We control maintenance and planting, and they had planted, let's see, 36,550 plants and 12 pounds of native grass seed. Now, I just worked with the district on a grant proposal, and I can tell you, I've seen some of the annual expenses, they're probably spent $100,000 by now, because the, the investment is amazing, and it is transformed, like all the blackberry is gone, it's incredible. And so I also just threw up some, there's a newt there, there's muskrat and otter tracks. Whenever we go to Bangston, we see tons and tons of evidence of wildlife, and it is just incredible. Next slide, please. So as you may know, the land trust has shared concerns about the UGB expansion and possible impacts to the easement since 2018, when we worked with Metro and made. impacts to the easement since 2018, when we worked with Metro and made place this condition of approval in their, this condition in their approval, which basically said that the city would avoid the conservation easement to the extent possible, which those of us that came from an environmental compliance background were like, great! It's been possible, there's so much that's possible. That's not how it played out. We've testified to the King City Council, the prior councils, and brought public comments, and I was on the technical advisory committee bringing the same concerns again and again. Next slide, please. So again, it is our responsibility to protect this easement, and our request is that King City should avoid the easement per Metro's condition, and that bisecting, I can't say it better than Kelsey did, but bisecting the easement will impact habitat hydrology and wildlife and violate the terms of the easement, which again is only possible through eminent domain. So I strongly support, the land trust strongly supports amending the current plan to relocate the east-west connector up out of the floodplain and entirely out of the Bankston Conservation Easement as proposed by the King City community. Amazing work.
That's amazing. Next slide.
So, these are just some random pictures of Tuolotin life that I love, and I threw these in here at the end because I was thinking, as I put this together today, about how, this is just one small project, this is just one small little piece of road, but these small decisions really add up. And everybody talks about, we got to protect the Tuolotin, we got to protect the Tuolotin, and these are the sorts of decisions that help us do that. So, last slide is just me saying thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Jim.
I don't want to interrupt your presentations, but I do want to make a few statements because I do have to leave. I get up at four o'clock in the morning.
For my job, and my eyes are starting to, I can already feel them starting to go.
I hope that they're just about done. I know, but here's the thing that I want to say. I definitely want to hear this, but I do feel that having this meeting going into such a late hour, and there hasn't really been enough notice to the community, and I live in Edgewater, and I see some of my constituents here from Edgewater, people in Edgewater have a right to be heard on this, and they didn't really get much notice. And I want to say that the reason why many of the council members that are sitting here is because we have been fighting to preserve, to preserve, okay? And we have been very unhappy that we've been left out of the conversation, especially Edgewater has been left out of the conversation. We don't know who was picked to be on this behind-the-scenes committee to work, but we weren't privy to that, that was kind of sequestered and not really transparent to the city council or to us or the constituents. And so there are a lot of feelings that need to be sorted out. And it's not because we don't support the preserve, because believe me, we do, but it's like having two children and having to pick between, do we decimate Edgewater to help the preserve, or is there another alternative where we don't have to kill one baby to keep the other one? And unfortunately, and I have to disclose that I am not only an Edgewater resident, but I'm also the president of the Edgewater HOA, and I have to recuse myself, and I probably am not even going to be able to, I have to check with OGEC, but I don't think I'm going to be able to vote, and I'm going to ask our council, because there are at least two members on our city council that were involved with this special group that worked with John Cook, and they may have to recuse themselves because there may be a conflict of interest or an ethical violation, I don't know, we'd have to check. But the point that I'm trying to make here is that I do think that everyone wants to support avoiding the preserve. We want to preserve nature. We have all been very unhappy about how this has been done. It has not been done fairly, it has not been done transparently. Our constituency has thousands of people who opposed this, and they were ignored. It led to a lot of turmoil, a lot of unrest, a lot of discontent. We all want to see that come to an end, but we still have work to do. And so I just want to make this statement because I definitely want to be on record because I have to leave. I really feel like we need to have this planned earlier in the day, not at eight o'clock at night, when, you know, I mean, we really need to, this is a very important meeting, I think it's a great start. I'm very excited because it gives us hope that maybe there is a light to the end of this tunnel, but I don't want to rush this, especially this late at night. So I hope you understand, and again, I'm speaking for a lot of people who don't even know that we're having this meeting today. And it was me who actually pushed to get an email blast out yesterday so that some of the people would know what was going on, because only the inside people knew what was going on. The outside people had no idea. And I am ethically really annoyed by that. I think that everyone should be able to have a say, not just the people that get invited to the party, okay? So I'm speaking for all the ugly people out there, including myself, who don't get invited. Does that make sense? So that's kind of how we are. Anyway, does anybody else want to say anything?
I think we need to go. Yeah, we need to just finish, I think the presentation was almost over, so let's go ahead and finish.
I just wanted to add, first of all, I want to acknowledge the previous meeting and how harmonious it feels, because I've been coming to these meetings for a long time because, well, first of all, my name is Pam Verdidero, I am representing New Home Company. We are a developer of the Kings and Terrace Town Center, and we became involved after the TSP was kind of all the way down the road. Anyway, we have also no property interest or ownership or options in this area, so I want to state that also. And our position along with MLG was to try to do exactly what you all wanted to do, which is to, so I'm really happy to see the people here, the number of people here, and I think that, to your point, Council Fragerman, is that there could be some workshops. This is just the beginning of this group being able to present in a workshop format, for your consideration.
It's exciting.
Very excited that it's finally come to this point. I will add, we have a development that we got approved, and we sat with planning based on the TSP, in which we did have to shift our street pattern around, that created some kind of inefficiencies and triangular kind of connections because of the limitations of the TSP, which is that the two-hundred feet, you can't move or shift a road. And that was in order to kind of keep things moving in the right direction for the east side of Kings and Terrace. So I just wanted to add that I think this will make improvements so that we don't come up with these kind of kitty-corner and triangular sections, and also it will keep roads out of natural resources, and prevent, mitigate some problems occur to do that. So I think this group has done a really great job of meeting, and they have the length of time that they have.
Yeah.
So, the thought one, please.
I'll go to Q and A, but I would love to answer a couple points that were brought up if I could. Eight people were chosen for the group originally. I don't know how they were chosen, I wasn't involved in the choosing, I was called and asked to be on it. Two of those are currently city councilors, they weren't at the time. When the main five meetings where all of this detail came out, and this is in your packet too, this is the sort of detailed, I wouldn't say detailed minutes, but it is overall what happened during those, how we came up with decisions, why we came up with decisions, why we had to actually bring in a moderator, because there were very differing sides. Not everybody was on the same page this whole time. I mean, Randy and me sat next to each other quite a bit, and we didn't always agree. Mikey and me sat next to each other quite a bit, we didn't always agree. So it's the kind of thing is, is this group wasn't, can't pick from a certain area, Edgewater or Rivermead or somewhere else, it's KCCA, it's, I'm unincorporated Washington County, I'm none of that. So it's a little bit from everywhere, I can't tell you how they picked it, but they did have a diverse group of people, including former mayor that was on here, and so it's the kind of thing, it was a group of people that were picked, and it's the kind of thing is, I don't see any legislative or legal reason that somebody that was on, not on the council at the time, was in discussions with us, can't still make a decision later.
We're going to check with our attorney and our F and O G E C. I don't want to get into the argument with you, Mr. Cook, I think you know where I stand on this. I'm about transparency, and I'm going to state for the record and for my constituents, and I'm not going to back down by somebody who comes in here and tries to, you know, I mean, we are very excited to have an opportunity to relook at the TSP, but I want to make it very clear that I want to involve everyone. I don't care how people got picked, the point is, they got picked and other people got excluded. Also, it's a fact that a lot of this was hidden from city council, I've been here since January, I don't know all this is going on, so I don't like it, and I'm going to call it out, and you shouldn't like it, because if you were sitting in my seat, and this went around your neighborhood, and you were left out, and it wasn't transparent, I think you would have a different view. The point that I'm trying to make tonight, and I'm sorry because I'm very exhausted, is I just want to make sure that we involve everyone, and we get everyone involved this time so that we don't have any more hard feelings, so we don't have any more recalls, so we don't have any more people saying, nobody told me. That's what I'm saying here. But we all want the same goal, and that's what we want.
Adam, Mayor, can we continue without interruption, please?
Yes, I want to just say that I understand what you're saying, I appreciate you guys being here, this is the first step of, like, obviously a culmination of a lot of hard work. I also understand that until now, giving, being given the opportunity to present to us, there wasn't really a voice for people wanting to change the TSP. So I appreciate all the work that has gone on behind the scenes, knowing that you weren't necessarily considered during that time. So I appreciate all this hard work, I think that we probably have some questions still that we want to ask. This is obviously not the end-all, be-all of where we're going, but further workshops are definitely, you know, in order. I did have a question about, you said, you know, many times that you have the legal responsibility to protect the easement, so can you explain further what that would entail if the city did decide to pursue eminent domain?
Well, eminent domain is, that's what does it, right? Like, all easements contemplate eminent domain, so there's a clause that basically says, if eminent domain happens, you know, and it's really more about finances, like how money gets parsed. Leading up to that, what would be the role of Columbia Land Trust legally fighting for the easement? Just continuing in these conversations, I think, to try to, somewhere where there's a possibility outside of easement, yeah. Council Gerhardt, do you have?
Sure, I have a question. Can we talk about cost? Savings or cost?
How much would it cost the city, is that what you're thinking?
Okay, so in the group, when we first talked about the cost, we, first of all, let me say, had, there is a climate-friendly and equitable communities program that the state has created, like, new rules.
Is that in here, Janet?
No.
What is it called again?
Climate-friendly and equitable communities, and there are new rules. So when we talked in the group about this change and how much would it cost to make this change, our understanding was, if we made a change to the TSP, we'd have to open the whole TSP and make sure it complied with the rules. So I called the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and I asked them about that, and they said, there's some states that we could do an interim update, that means you can change just a part of the TSP, and not the whole thing. So that, if we do that, let them know that we want to do that by June 2027, we don't have to redo the whole thing. And then I talked about like a cost estimate, all verbal, I talked to him about what we were thinking, he said maybe fifty-two hundred thousand, that I should talk with someone at ODOT, a planner, that are experts. So I talked to the planner, and he said that another city is doing an interim update, an extreme version of it, and that was, their budget was two hundred and fifty thousand. So, this is just sense of magnitude, it's not, a lot more information we need to gather, but sense of magnitude, you know, under just two hundred and fifty. And there are grants.
Who does the money go to? It goes to ODOT? Yeah, but who do we pay?
You're paying probably consultants or staff.
So, even though it's just a line segment on the map, that Fisher Road extension is the backbone of streets, the east-west collector in the TSP. So it's a little bit more than just a minor modification, because to change it, you have to, one, you have to designate a new collector, and in order to designate a new collector, you need to hire a traffic engineer to come out with reports that say that that new collector can accommodate the traffic. Then you have to revise the TSP to then identify that new collector and accommodate that with all the other neighborhood routes and everything like that. And so just getting that consultant, you have to put out RFPs, on top of that, they will have to develop findings that the city will have to come up with a report to send to the Department of State, or the Department of Land Conservation and Development, to justify why we're changing the TSP, and to actually, you know, clarify and make a definitive finding the fact that this new TSP with the modification would still be functional to the standards that are required by ODOT and required by DLCD. And so you need to have like legitimate data to back up your findings, you can't just arbitrarily say, yeah, this will be fine. And so I talked to Washington County earlier today, and they just spitball after kind of going over some of our options, and they estimated on Janet's kind of higher range, around two fifty, three hundred thousand. And so that's where we would need to see grants, we would have, in order to do that, the city council would need to pass a resolution to authorize staff to go out, steam grant money, I would reach out to our partners, TRK, Columbia Land Trust, get letters of support, letters of support from the community. You were worried about voicing, getting voices from the community. Part of that money would have to be hiring a public engagement consultant and organizing open houses, having events, that costs money. So it's a whole kind of plethora of things that would be under the umbrella of the TSP amendment that would make it to where we are abiding by the state law, and we're satisfying all of our requirements with the state agencies, with Washington County, with ODOT, and all those other shareholders from a jurisdictional standpoint.
That makes sense, and thank you for explaining that so thoroughly.
Yeah, and Missy can explain if I missed any specific points during that.
That was so comprehensive.
Are we all?
Thank you. It was very comprehensive.
I know, wasn't that excellent? So I'm assuming this new, we look, that still involves going through Edgewater and going through Fisher Road, am I right? Okay.
Well, back to cost again, if we didn't go through the Bankston Nature Reserve, which I understood would be quite a substantial, a deep ravine, it could be a substantial bridge, sort of, something, rather, it would be very costly. Any idea of what savings there are around not having to do that?
The cost of the road itself, I mean?
Yeah, and the bridge, or the biotic, or whatever you call it. I know that's hard to figure out, and who would be saving the money not to save?
It would be the developer who was engaged in that particular land use action that would be potentially saving two or three million dollars or more from design and, you know, getting consultation from all the, you know, the parties, right? You know, the environmental consultant, engineers, and et cetera. So there is a savings, like you're stating.
And that money that they save, the two to three million or whatever it is, could go into parks?
Well, you've got, you've got system development charges, which, you know, you've done a thorough job, the city's done a thorough job in investigating what it would cost to, for infrastructure for the entire Kings and Terrace Town Center, and then some, and so you could have excess, you could lower fees. I mean, that's just something that you look at in the future when you have a change or a plan.
Or might they partner with us to make this change happen if it will save them that much money?
Sure. Probably not. In my experience, the developer, when you start talking about costs that will, like infrastructure costs and improvements when they're coming with a development, if they exceed the margin of profit, they just say, oh, no, not for me, we're not going to do it. Like, there's properties out in Kings and Terrace that half of them are a wetland, and just the cost of having to mitigate developing around that wetland is prohibitive for their development, so they move on to somewhere else. And I believe that the Bankston property would be pretty prohibitive for development, not saying that it would never happen, and again, like, if the city ever did put a road through, a developer would have to be really desperate for land to go after that, because developable land on the Bankston property is not that much relative to the acreage of the whole property itself.
But without building that backbone and going through eminent domain through that, you're still not going to have that collector road.
Oh, the neighborhood route would be the collector road.
Which is?
Because the collector road is a collection of streets, not just one single road.
And in this plan, we're actually just talking about taking a current neighborhood route, making a collector, which adds like eight feet. route, making a collector, which adds like eight feet and a few other things along the way to make it more collector-friendly.
So, can we be more specific? And Max, you're good at explaining this. Um, so...
If, if, if it's proposed, edit now. We're gonna go through Fisher Road and through Edgewater. Where will the collector roads be? Is that gonna be Capulet? Is that gonna be...
Fisher.
It'll just be Fisher?
Yes. One-hundred-and-thirty-seventh.
Two-hundred-and-thirty-seventh. That would be the collector road. All the other roads would remain their same designation. No houses would get demolished. Capulet may connect over to One-hundred-and-thirty-seventh as a second outlet so that you're not bottlenecking people in Edgewater if they wanna go to the west. So, say you're gonna go to the Safeway in Sherwood and you live in Edgewater, you might take Capulet instead of going down to Fisher to alleviate Fisher from that traffic.
Do we have a third option if that's them going through Fisher?
Not without demolishing houses.
There's no...
Fisher was designed twenty years ago as the widest street in the city. There's a reason why it's the only roundabout in the entire city. Because this was what the vision was for Fisher back when they built Edgewater twenty years ago.
Even though they have the whole power lines... Went through there or how, if they...
They build a road under power lines.
That's not what we've been told, though, because...
Beef Bend is under the power lines. And the power lines cross dozens of roads.
I think it's time that we are opening it up to an open forum. Do we have a list of signups?
Could you say who you are and what your relative government experience is to this?
Uh, yes, John Cook, former mayor of Tigard. Uh, Cook Park's named after my family. Um, been involved in, after that, as current mayor of Tigard, I was also the president of the Mayor's Association. So, been very involved in government over the years. Prior to that, I was nineteen years as the budget chair of Washington County. So, I've been involved in county for twenty years before that. So, involved quite a bit in all the, over the years, so, thank you.
We're getting the signup sheet for open forum.
Well, while you're waiting.
Yeah, go for it.
Uh, Jen, you seem highly knowledgeable.
Yeah.
Uh, expert perhaps. Uh, anyways, uh, the way the Fisher Road extension is currently planned, it'd obviously be damaging for upland habitat and riparian zones. Moving the collector north would be less damaging.
I mean, wherever you put a road through habitat, you're gonna damage habitat, right?
Yes.
Um, but I think moving it, and I'm not an expert in that, I would say, but I'm, moving it further out of the floodplain and where the ravine gets narrower is less risky and damaging than going, I mean, it's pretty wide where Bangston is. And, um, if any of you have had the benefit of walking Mike's property and seeing, you know, what can happen to the ravines, I mean, it's pretty astonishing. I know there's been a lot of data over the years. So, it's always astounded me that we were talking about going down so low because you're talking about really big bridges, like super expensive infrastructure and highly erodible floodplain habitat. Missy, would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you so much. I was just thinking about raising my hand. Uh, so, just a couple of things I wanted to say to address something that is in the presentation. Um, and it addresses what happens to development that's already been approved while, if the city council decides to undertake this TSP update. And local governments should always be looking at and refreshing their, their constitutions, their comprehensive plans. So, that's not unusual to undertake, but Oregon does a goalpost, uh, development that has already been approved. And so, if in the intervening period where the data is gathered that Max so well describes, traffic counts are taken, traffic estimates are done, if development comes in and is approved, they'll be under, they'll be grandfathered under the old TSP. So, it's just important to keep in mind that there is not a way to pause or stop development while this planning update process is continuing to go on. The other thing I wanted to mention, my recollection, 'cause I know just a little bit about the TSP, is, um, part of the impetus for rejecting the alternative that was closest to Beef Bend Road is that Metro and the transportation numbers needed to see, uh, trips that were dispersed off of Beef Bend Road by making a road that's far enough away that people would not use Beef Bend Road. I'm not saying that very, very, you know, articulately, but it's just important to keep in mind that, that as the data is collected that Max describes, one of the things that the transportation engineers will be looking at is, you know, distance from Beef Bend and how that correlates to traffic taking the new collector road. And all of that data can be gathered. It's just, you know, paying for it. That's it. That's all I wanted to say for now. Unless Councilor Gerhart may have had a question a long time ago.
No, I just wanted to make sure that you were in attendance here.
You bet.
Thank you.
Go to open forum. Our, uh, first person up, Greg Russell.
Right here.
Hi, Greg.
My name's Greg Russell and I'm with unincorporated Washington County. I am very pleased with the current King City Mayor and councillors. We're not only listening, but responding and following through on the wishes of the King City constituents and surrounding communities. We were never against development parks or the West Side Trail. Our focus has always been on the transportation system, the Twolton River, the wildlife, and the Bangston Nature Preserve. When we started the many field trips beginning in April of twenty-twenty-one, I was certain that logic and common sense would prevail in preventing the Fisher Road extension going through the Bangston property of Roy Rogers Road. I was wrong. So much time and energy and money has been wasted by the previous King City government by ignoring the very people who are supposed to represent. I want to personally thank all of you for having the courage to revisit the TSP, give us hope for the future. Thank you.
I did forget to say that we'll limit to three minutes, um, because there's a lot of you.
Suzie Self.
Oh.
Hi, and Jessica had said that I come here. I don't know if this rule is fit right now, but here I am. Suzie Self with Suzie Self Financial. And we met at the Fourth of July parade. And she asked what I do. And I told her that I'd just gotten back from making a movie, um, and all about seniors and helping them secure their retirement. And my mom is a King City resident and I'm a future resident, um, too. And so, you had, Jessica had said, one of her friends had just been down. And she's like, "Oh, my gosh, we gotta get this information out to people," um, and, you know, help people. And it's not only my job, but it's my passion, is to help protect retirees, lift their money and get guaranteed income that increases over their lifetime. And my office is at the King Canyon right across from the car wash there, too. So, anyway, I have a current movie that I usually rent out, like AMC Theaters, Riggles, but I wanted to partner and see about getting the movie here over at the Clubhouse, different things. Um, and I did up a little flyer and I have the current movie where people can watch online. And, um, it's got a free promo code, so it doesn't cost you guys any money if people are interested. And then I'm in the new movie as a featured expert as well as an executive producer. Um, and that new movie's coming out in October and it's kind of part two to this. But, you know, like I said, it's my passion. I wanna help people. I've seen the good, the bad, the ugly. And I hear it all the time from my mom and, um, people that are living around her, um, too, so.
Could you leave your flyer with us?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're gonna patch you up with Lieutenant Sigler. I think, uh, we started the meeting at five-thirty, which is when I thought you were gonna come and speak at that open forum.
Oh, you told me six o'clock.
Oh, I thought I wrote you five-thirty, but anyway, my bad.
I'm sorry about that.
No, no, you're good.
Not the right time?
Yeah.
So, obviously...
Yeah, what I'll do for all the council members, if you guys wanna watch the movie, it's about an hour and fifteen-minute, you know, runtime. Um, and it will give you a really good idea of what I do.
Yeah, so many...
Uh, next up, we have Adam Aller. Aller? Am I not even close? Adam? Is there an Adam here? Oh, okay. Uh, how about Kelsey Shaw? Oh, okay. How about Lori Trippi? She left the way to the summit. Linda Plonstrom?
Did you not fill out your sign-up?
Oh, was it all...
Sign-in, sign-in.
No, you're good. I did that mic for a time, I can't hold it.
Thank you for your input.
Dave Robinson?
Present.
All right.
I'm Dave Robinson. We are in unincorporated Washington County. We've been involved for a very long time. I heard some things tonight that were very encouraging. I heard some things that were not so encouraging. But a few points I wanna read out. Number one, completely remove from the TSP the extension of Fisher Road to One-hundred-and-thirty-seventh. Just remove it. Now, one of your constituents wants a regional arterial for the twelve thousand cars a day. We are not talking about a community connected or collector road. I'm saying Fisher to One-hundred-and-thirty-seventh will effectively make the exact arterial that everyone traveling from Wilsonville and Balkin to Hillsborough will take that road. We cannot do that.
I'm sad.
Approving this connection under the guise of a connected neighborhood would be wildly premature until such distant due to time that housing development has possibly migrated east from Roy Rogers to the proximity of One-hundred-and-thirty-seventh. A neighborhood has to be on the other side to connect it. If you're gonna punch through Fisher Road now before there's any housing on the other side, you're making an arterial highway bypass. None of your constituents want that. If the development, you know, new homes and all the people come up to it, at some point in the future decades, that might make great sense to punch Fisher so that people can connect. Until such time, you cannot claim you're making an interconnected community. You're making a thoroughfare. It's as simple as that. Regarding some of the, um, comments I heard our esteemed colleague talk about Washington County and regulations and everything like that, I can assure you, Washington County does want interconnected communities. Hundred percent. There has to be paths for people to get around. To hear someone say that a road can't be two-hundred feet from Beef Bend and be that as a collector arterial, that is, part and parcel was saying the whole time, we've been fighting Metro, and, and Stephen Roberts at Land Use and Transportation because they want another road. They want a road because Beef Bend has failed. We don't need, we're so close to the river, we don't need another Beef Bend below Beef Bend. As simple as that. Any connection to One-hundred-and-thirty-seventh implies that you want an arterial bypass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Fitzsimmons?
Right here. I work for Twelve River Cheaper and my job with the organization is to get people out of the Twolton River and, uh, work with the communities up and down the river on enhancing and creating public access to it. And, uh, I guess the, the main point I wanna make is, you know, we, we work with Tigard on what will soon be the first truly ADA, fully ADA accessible point of access to the Twolton River. Uh, the city of Twolton is working on a, a, a new park that's going to embrace and, and connect downtown right to the river. The city of Cornelius is, uh, what was the, was the ultimate steamboat destination back in the day when steamboats fly to Twolton. They are, you know, in a sense, reclaiming, uh, you know, a hundred-plus years of history by looking at, you know, let's, let's, let's create a way to get people out of the river here. Uh, Washington County will soon have its first, uh, developed, well, it's called a access over the Atlantic. Um, King City is exploring amazing options for King City Community Park and a bridge over the river, a pedestrian bridge someday. Um, as I work with groups and as I get them out on the river, everybody wants to come up above Highway ninety-nine and W up here, up, uh, past, uh, King City because what they say is the refuge. We wanna go up and see the refuge. But what they're talking about is this amazing combination of the refuge, Beef Bend Natural Area, the Bangston, you know, it's this collective place that, that really is a very different stretch of the river from any other. And, uh, from my experience of the stretches down lower and up above, you know, putting the, the type of road that is being described along the river will really change that, that feeling. And it would be really sad to see that happen right at a time when King City is following this parallel track of creating, you know, this amazing access for citizens, like the community park. So, um, so anyway, just, just that comment, you know, people want to come here. Uh, we're excited to see King City embrace the river through the improvements of the park. And, uh, yeah, I would be sad to see that, that stuff. And we really do wanna get all of you out of the river.
One at a time, two at a time?
I was down this morning on the Twolton.
Um, Karen Meier. Karen? Sheila? Carl, love to. Carl, everything. Hey, Dawn? You still there, or you're...
I just wanna say this is really great to be here and actually be in this place where we're all talking about this contentious topic and having a very, like, I think, functional group of people that are talking about that and sharing everybody's thoughts and, and through these kinds of meetings, we'll find a, a resolution. Um, I did have a question in regards to the presentation. It talked about three connections to One-hundred-and... Sorry, not mobile, by the way, I'm part of Rivermead. I know I've been here a lot, but I'm all covered up, so I should've said that first. But, anyway, the presentation talks about three connections. And there's actually a fourth that I didn't see on your presentation, which goes through the very bottom of Edgewater, close to the park, and it connects through the Rivermead Park and it connects to One-hundred-and-thirty-seventh. So, that connection is not listed, but it is listed on the map just right up here. So, kind of a question, if you guys are eliminating that as, as part of the proposal, if it's just missing and it's still part of the TSP? So, just kinda wanted to point that out. Um, I'm gonna go there, but then you had, Jessica had said that connection at One-hundred-and-thirty-first, uh, or sorry, Fisher Road and One-hundred-and-thirty-seventh. And, um, Max, you said that it was always part of the plan. Well, I just wanted to clarify, that's part of the plan of the promise, the neighborhood connection. And, and even, even though this is a really great alternative, um, and I think you guys did great work, I feel like it is a compromise between the promises that were made, people's Edgewater and to Rivermead, by still making a collector connection as opposed to a neighborhood connection. And I know I, you know, some of that history and what they say, well, even if it's a neighborhood connection, people will still use it if it connects. And, and that's true. I use it kind of afrodisiac all the time. But, um, I also had a question in regards to the collector road itself. If we change that collector road, um, where it was, at least in our community through the Rivermead, it was only expected to have one bike path, one multi-use path and not sidewalks on both sides of the street. And I would propose that if there is a collector that's moved up, that there would be an emphasis in nature that there's actually access for people to walk on both sides of the street. I never really understood why that would be removed when you're talking about roughly eight to twelve homes per acre. That's a lot of people on both sides of the road and especially families that need to go pool or wherever. One multi-use path would not be in that. That's what I had to share. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mike Meyer.
So, Mike Meyer, I live opposite One-hundred-and-thirty-seven. I have a group. I wasn't planning to talk to them that because of the presentation, but it's nice to be able to speak after everyone has said their piece. And then I can, so I have some my own. So, the first one is when, this was first brought up, I thought there was inconvenient... So the first one is when, this was first proposed, I thought there was going to be no way that a road was going to go through the banks of the river. No way. And it's it. So from my perspective, we take the position is there's no way we're going to let it down. And, um, and that's where I stand personally. We're, we're not going to let it down. So, um, a couple of things to address that came up. First is, um, the, the no, the no pause, right? The ability to not pause the master plan or to pause, uh, development because, which is why it's imperative that we begin this process, move through this process quickly before we find ourselves painting ourselves as a corner. That's something that we talked about during the, uh, the dialogue. It's hitting ourselves in a position where then we're stuck. So I think it's important to hit this one. As far as everyone being involved, we've tried to get everyone involved through this entire process. We can't get everyone involved. I've been very outspoken. I've been very involved. One put my name on the Luba field. I'm the one that's put my name on a lot of stuff. I put myself out there because I feel that this is important. I think many of you do feel extremely important. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. Right? So, um, how do you get everyone involved? Yeah. Right? I mean, it's demonstrated that. You have the same ten people, twelve people that go to all the council meetings, right? Unless something affects them personally and people show up, like sidewalk outside or a tree sprawled, whatever happens to affect them personally. How do we get people here? We try, right? I have organized meetings in the park where I'm trying to get people involved, the TSP and the master planning process. Many of those people are here tonight. It came to that initial meeting, right? Social media next door. Try and try and try and get people here. Hustle. So who is everyone? Who I want to know. Everyone that cares has been showing up. Everyone that want to be a part of the process, put themselves out there. Right? And, um, so that's what I want to address on that part. Keeping traffic off of Beast End Road, as far as the distance from Beast End Road and where, where these alternatives are. Look at the, at the west side and how that, those roads are planned right now. Those roads are parallel to Beast End Road all the way till about one fiftyth, same distance, equidistant from Beast End Road all the way across until one fiftyth. And at that point, they diverge. So where's the concern over traffic using Beast End Road on one half Kingston Terrace with those roads spaced evenly from Beast End Road all the way to that point until it starts to diverge and go to the banks of the river? Where's the logic behind that? Where's the logic? You know, one backbone road coming out of the most densest populated area of Kingston Terrace in the town center, one backbone road. Why are there three backbone roads in a twelve hundred foot span at one forty seventh? It's not logical.
About thirty seconds.
I'm going to take all these other guys' time to.
I know.
So, uh, for a collector road, Metro standards are one half mile spacing. You have an arterial of Beast End Road, city is twelve hundred feet wide at one forty seventh, one and a half a mile. Where's your half mile spacing for a collector, right? But we're still proposing a collector road. Maybe when we do the TSP amendment, they can look at, at whether or not we need a collector road, right? Maybe we don't need a collector road. Look at the Metro standards. One half mile spacing for collector roads. So I think that needs to be looked at. Um, as far as Max's statement about Fisher Road being the whitest part, whitest road in Edgewater, comprehensive plan before it was changed said that any extension of Fisher Road would be old, right? Or a difficult road. There is no, no intention at all of it ever being a collector road. I ha, I, I made a print. I have that document shows what that comp plan said. And all the people of Edgewater, if they did their due diligence when they bought their homes and they looked at the comprehensive plan and said, I'm going to read the comprehensive plan and see what's going to go on with Fisher Road in the future. And they read it, they go, oh, well, no concern because it's just going to be a neighborhood road. Well, guess what? So, you know, it works on you because the city changed the comp plan to collector, right? There was no intention of it ever to be a collector road. So that isn't why that road was wide, because it was going to be a collector road. City changed their mind. The one, but I'm over my time. But I think I said everything that I want to say. But my hope is that we put all this crap behind us, right? And we move forward and we do what this community stood up and testified for, that this plan is a joke to go through a conservation easement. If I ask everyone in here, if you had an option to go around a conservation easement or through it with a collector road with eighty-six hundred cars a day, I guarantee you anybody's being honest would say, all right. Thank you.
Hello.
Um, I have a comment from Lloyd Meyer. As independent study member, members contacting the mall existing landowners that have been detected by the routes.
We haven't.
Well, first of all, public testimony is not Q and A time, so.
It can be.
Can be. We answer that? No, we did not because we were not demolishing any land and the idea was to keep it on the proposed routes that were already there. So we didn't create a new route. We just used the proposed routes.
Okay. All right. Anybody online, if you would like to provide public comment, go ahead and use the raise hand feature, please. Hearing none, we will. Oh, did you want to? Yeah, Shaila. No, that's okay. We will add to the list.
I thought the whole thing about Fisher Road, like that is how it is. I thought to me, he does that in objectives, in the management of that, objectives to Fisher Road when it was initially, uh, talked about. And now we are doing the Fisher again and I still object to extending of Fisher.
Our, our community is working, our energy.
In justice, practically what we are struggling, yes, two cars passing through Fisher Road is impossible. And you, maybe we extend it, that there's been lots of traffic, there's lots of children in there. You don't use that extension. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shaila.
Thank you, Shaila.
Great. That closes open forum and I believe now we just adjourned.
Uh, hands up back there in the corner.
Oh, I apologize.
I need to say, I'm running, I'm running under lane in Rivermead. I'd just like to point out one thing about Fisher, the possible Fisher extension through the Bankston property. I believe people on the planning commission in the past have looked at that, but determined that a bridge to cross the Bankston easement, the approximately four hundred and twenty-five feet length just to cross the ravine. I believe there was mention of the cost of that, the tens of millions of dollars simply for that. One bridge plus one ravine, plus that ravine, F other ravines, plus more than. Wanted to point that out. I believe Councilor Eardar, do you have a question about that?
Thank you.
There's still somebody online, right?
Floyd, did you have his hand up?
If you're still there, would you like to make public comment? Feel free to unmute yourself if you do. Okay. So it looks like Lloyd does not need to make public comment. We have one more. Oh, yes. Yeah, we can hear you.
Thank you for holding this hearing. The reason why I asked the question was that, you know, I know the Alternative Three and Alternative Four were part of the original concept plan, but it, I, I, I don't quite know where the new collector goes. I was looking at the map that you showed tonight, but it's kind of hard to tell, you know, from here. But one of the things I remember about the concept plan when it first came out seven or eight years ago is that, um, oh, by the way, I, I own a piece of property on, on one forty seventh and Beast End Road. But when the first concept plan came out, the, the drawings were, and they were engineering drawings, of course, but they showed road going across my property. And I just thought it was a little bit unfair to print a document showing uses of private landowners' property without at least, um, you know, notifying, notifying the landowners, um, before. And so I, I, I do want to know exactly what the idea is for future collector roads north of where it was originally proposed. So I'll be in contact with folks to make sure I understand where, where these roads are intended to go. Thank you for your hearing tonight.
Thank you, Lloyd. Um, any others online? I want to miss any. Okay, we'll go ahead and close, um, open forum, but we'll give presenter last.
Uh, last comment I want to make is we were not trying to draw a final map. We were trying to propose something to bring the communities together. There's been, you know, whether it's any of the neighborhood, the idea is how do we bring everybody back together? If through the planning process, through the determinations of, of road transportation numbers, we're able to say that we don't have to have that collector road and it becomes just a neighborhood road, then that's fine. If they say the connection from Fisher to one hundred, uh, thirty seventh just can be a neighborhood road, that's fine, too. We're not saying we require it to be a collector. We're saying this is a route to keep a lot of cut through traffic, try and still follow the rules that we were told that were out there, uh, that we had to have followed from Metro or Washington County. So if we can avoid some of those, that's a whole different thing. The idea is, I, I agree with what Mike said, is if we wait six or nine months to start on this and somebody develops another piece in there and they start building where that road was going to be, then that's sort of the problem. And I know the majority of the, the property being built is moving from the west to the east. And that's true, it could be decades before it actually reaches one hundred and thirty seventh and that's fine, too. Uh, but the point is if somebody develops one piece in there and it's from a road that wasn't, that's our worry is when Mike says painting yourself in the corner, we just were trying to make sure that we didn't require something that maybe in the future, you guys didn't want that. You know, this is what this new council was voted in for to, to make some changes on that. We're just saying that, you know, we're trying to be careful not to paint yourself in a corner and the longer you wait to do something, you could end up that way. So we appreciate your time and effort. It's not a final plan. We know it has to go through a lot of processes, has to go through costs and everything else. I understand that. We just wanted to bring something forward so that started the discussion point versus being a final.
Yeah, it's a great starting point. It's a good kickoff for us to now be able to have conversations and push, push it all forward. So we very much appreciate everybody being here and wonderful presentation. I mean, we want to start this, this process of what it's going to take to kind of make some of this happen. I think another work session is in order where we can, um, you know, start hearing a little bit more about.
I would just suggest that we get more notice out to, I mean, as you can tell, the people, a lot of people don't really know what's going on. And that's because we've had a lot of change over here. It's the council. We're just getting now our public information out, so we get information out to the public so they know what's going on.
Yeah, but we'll do, we'll do a much more proper notice. So I don't think our work session should be like at the next meeting, um, but let's figure out when it makes sense to have a work session and what would, what that would entail. But at least this is a good starting point and a place where we can start from. Absolutely.
Um, I did want to say that, um, we need to age Chittleton on a very well-known and reputable.
Worked on a ton of, um, land use.
And without them undermining the work that the city's already done, they looked at the TIA and came up with, actually verified it ahead of receiving that. It was very much in line with the reason that it's already done. Um, and so they can take a, a, another look at that and, and look at the, the TIA and, and coordinate with the law.
It's really just the, the engineering and the naturally focused consulting that we need to try to end it.
I would say just from, uh, from a government standpoint, we would need to put out an RP for that. Councilor Rosenball, do you have something?
Yeah, I just have another session. I, I would encourage you to invite Metro staff because King City is sandwiched between Highway ninety nine W, which has not gotten the planning, it preserves and Roy Rogers Road, which are two big connectors. So what happens here affects regional transportation scene and our staff has done a lot of analysis. We don't take a stand on this Fisher Road thing, but, um, and I, I understand all the concerns, but I would just encourage you to invite us.
Great shot. That's a quick shot right there.
Yes.
Is there alternatives to just not go through Fisher Road? I mean, what I'm, what I'd like to know from what I'm hearing is there, is there any way that we look at it all to another alternative?
I think let's, let's give a that to the next work session because there's so much discussion left to be had and, um, but I think, I think.
That is the question.
But I think, but I think the public would like to know that we're at least exploring that. Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to get that out on the table.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So do we have one scheduled, the work session?
We do not yet, no. I think that we need to probably figure out what we want exactly in that work session, um, what we want to come out of it, you know, and, um, and we want to give the public enough time to know what we're doing and, and be able to be here to weigh in, so.
We have the work session next month because then you push it back another month, then we're at the Christmas holidays and all that.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, I was just saying not at our September seventeenth meeting, right? Um, but yeah, I think let's, let's work together to figure out when that makes sense. I think we have to end it for tonight, but I'm happy to speak with you afterwards.
I just want to access to the presentation.
Uh, thank you.
That's right for that.
Um, make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Uh, Madam Mayor, do I need to sign papers?
Yes.
I don't need to. I don't need to. I don't need to. I don't want to.
Thank you, Beth.
Sure, thank you.
But, um.
My sincere thanks.